I'll move that we go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And also to consider the purchase exchange lease value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and we'll be returning into public open session at the conclusion of our executive session. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Minutes late, and I apologize. So announcements, next week is election day, so I hope everyone comes out and votes. There's some big issues on the ballot. Question one for the debt exclusion for the two schools is on the ballot, and then of course, one seat on this board, and three school committee seats, and other miscellaneous elections, constable and
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority, and then town meeting members. There's a lot of competitive races, so pay attention and vote. Announcements?
So I want to kick things off. It's a momentous night for all of us, but maybe especially for our chair, who's it's his last meeting this evening. So I want to start by expressing thanks and appreciation to Neil for his six years of service to the town as a member of this select board, and then the past four years as chair. To say that this night's been weighing on my mind is perhaps a bit of an exaggeration, but not as far from the truth as you might think, given that I've certainly been thinking about it. I first met Neil when I joined the advisory committee in June of 2009, which means that I've had the pleasure of serving on a committee or board with him for nine of the last 10 years. And while we'll both be members of Town Meeting for the next year, it still feels like I'm standing on the precipice of a not insignificant change, if only in my own life. But that's enough about me. I want to turn back to Neil. So thank you again for your service too, and leadership of the town. You helped to guide the town during a decade that I suspect will be regarded as one of the most consequential in Brookline's history by our successors. You did so with a steady hand and while maintaining near universal respect, even from some of your most fierce critics. And this is a legacy to be proud of. So I don't want to drone on for too long, I'm sure there are others that want to say nice things about you. But I want to end by sharing hope for the future. Members of this board and others in town government spend a lot of time going to evening meetings, some of which get us home late at night and frequently wide awake after having engaged in difficult thought-provoking and even sometimes emotional conversations. And one of my strategies for settling my mind and gaining perspective is to read. And against that context, I want to conclude by sharing two quotes drawn from some of my most recent reading material. First, I want to share words from Ron Chernow's recent biography of Ulysses S. Grant. On July 24th, 1885, upon the passage of Grant, the New York Times summarized Grant's salient qualities as follows: "If a great soldier is indomitable in purpose, exhaustless in courage, endurance, and equanimity; if he is free from vanity and pettiness; if he is unpretentious, truthful, frank, consistent, generous to friends, magnanimous to foes, and patriotic to the poor, of him it will be said he is like Grant." And second, words also drawn from the 19th century by Mary Ann Evans, professionally known as George Eliot: "The growing good of the world is partly dependent upon unhistoric acts." So to be clear, I'm not suggesting that Neil is the historical equivalent of the 18th president, or that 132 years from now, a bestselling biography will be written about him, although I would read it.
Won't be bestselling.
I instead propose that in the end, conduct is at least as important as historic achievement. And lest anybody think I'm trying to move the goalposts, Neil has plenty of achievements to point to as a member of this board. Grant was remembered and revered for ending the Civil War, for launching Reconstruction and attempting to protect formerly enslaved people in the South from de facto, if not de jour, attempts to re-enslave them. But he was also lionized upon his death for how he accomplished these acts. Grant's obituary says that successes will be measured against his model of humanity, directness, fair treatment of friends, opponents, and rather than the number of battles won or the power of fame obtained. Unhistoric day-to-day acts then form the greatest part of Grant's legacy, and if we believe Mary Ann Evans contributed to the historic transformative accomplishments. My wish is that Neil's legacy will be judged in the same way as Grant's on how he did the job of select board member. I hope that Neil will inspire those of us involved in town government to see where our conduct is falling short, and to remember how to achieve something is at least as important as the achievement itself. So thank you for your service and dedication to the town, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I've threatened to say some things. I didn't say whether they would be nice or not. But the truth of the matter is that I've also known Neil for an awfully long time. I don't even remember exactly when. We were both involved in Town Meeting for many years and on the advisory committee, but I didn't really get to know him until four years ago, when I came on to this board. And I think the thing that I most admire about Neil is his ability to listen to all sides, to be calm in the face of crisis, adversity, whatever, and to move the goalpost forward. He's pretty determined to work on the projects that he's -- when he works on a project, he's very determined to see it through. He works on it very thoroughly. He considers the consequences. And I think he always has the good of Brookline at heart. And I think that, to me, is one of the things that is the hallmark of excellent leadership. And I think that he's also willing to talk with anyone in the town and try to understand their points of view. So I think he's really been a model of civility and decorum in this time of national -- should I say disgrace? National emphasis on angry words and divisive conduct. And fortunately, in Brookline, we haven't had that. And I really do think that Neil's leadership has been very important in that respect. So I do agree with everything that Ben said, and everything that Bernard said earlier, as well as other people. But I just wanted to stress that aspect of it. I think he's really -- has given us a very thorough roadmap of how to be a good select person, and the kind of job that we hope will continue to be done by others as we go forward.
Well, my turn. At events like this, you know, board members try to summarize their feelings about a leader who's leaving, not forever, but for other challenges for the town. I actually can't give the type of rousing speech that select person Franco gave. I have not read Chernow's biography of U.S. Grant, or any other biography recently. I mean, I don't have that much -- I do love Mary Ann Evans, both her novels, as well as she's translated a few books I found very important. But I can't quote from her either. But, you know, what I will say is that at this last meeting, you know, we should think about the ways in which your leadership has got us through very, very challenging times, but has also enabled us to push through and achieve very, very important things. And, you know, that, I think that your ability to do those two things, push through achievements as well as avoid hitting the shoals of our challenges, I think that's the right metaphor. You know, it was based on the fact that I think you're a very thoughtful person, who really is able to understand and act on the small, minute, mundane details behind the scenes necessary to bring events or issues and projects to the board, to Town Meeting, successfully, as well as to know how to prevent the challenges from getting too far out of control most of the time.
Yeah, most of the time.
But, you know, what we all have benefited from your leadership is how we learn from those challenges. We learn from the successes that we have, so that going forward, we can maximize the successes and minimize the challenges. So as a token of our appreciation, I would like to give you a little memento, and I'd like to -- I'm not going to hold it up, because I'll drop it, but it's a glass -- what do you call this?
Plaque.
Plaque, yeah. Plagues are usually wood. But I'll read it.
They're brass.
I'll read it. Let me turn it around, so I can read it the right way. Presented to Neil Washinsky in appreciation of his six years of dedicated service on the Brookline Select Board. And I think the operative word there is dedicated, but there are also many other operative words, but dedicated is a good start. Thank you.
Now I have to say something?
Have you been reading?
I actually, I didn't come prepared to say anything. It's -- it has been really my life's honor to serve in this role. It's funny, I spent a career in the federal bureaucracy, and I said this earlier, I turned down opportunities over the years to go to Washington. And as a result, I kind of killed my career in the federal service, because if you want to move up, you kind of have to be in DC. But I always had the public policy itch, and this role as select board member, I'm still gonna -- I'm never going to get used to that, has given me that opportunity. And I think back to some of the things that we all have worked on in the last six years, and all the folks on the board who've served before you during my time on the board, people like Dick Banker, and Betsy DeWitt, and Nancy Daly, and Ken Goldstein. And I've learned from each of them something about how to serve as a select board member. I've met some amazing people as a select board member, and before that, when I was on the advisory committee. And I know, looking at my current colleagues, I'm leaving the board, I'm leaving the town in good hands. I hope you can continue some of the things I've done, and I've worked on, and I'm sure you will. But I'm not going anywhere. I'm just changing my role in town government. I'll be in Town Meeting, and I'm still the primary petitioner in two warrant articles. One of them, a very important warrant article for the town and the economic development of the town, the Waldo-Durgan series of warrant articles. So you're gonna see me, and I'll be happy to assist wherever you think I can be of assistance. And it's been real. So, you know, after all, listening to all these nice words, it's like, wow. Then we had an event earlier this evening, I see some folks here who were there, where even more nice words were said, and it's just, you know, I don't handle that well. So with that said, we're going to dive into our agenda. We have some miscellaneous items, and I'll just mention select board member Hamilton will be here a bit late today. So, get my glasses out. We have minutes for April 16th. Any changes in the minutes? Okay. I'll move that we approve the minutes of April 16th. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Anyone here for public comment? Okay. We have a contract for owner project manager services with Leftfield for the Baldwin and Driscoll projects.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we had a committee of seven, and the committee of seven had a ballot of six, seven firms selected. Leftfield is the most desirable firm. That would meet the needs of the town.
Why don't you speak into the mic, Mr. Masak?
Sorry. This work is for preliminary scope of work involved with schematic design, really namely two issues to do. We want Leftfield, we wanted Leftfield to do a secondary estimate of the architect's estimate, and do a budget review, and then also do what's called a construction manager at risk application. Both of these were envisioned when we did the November
Right.
1,500,000 feasibility study funding.
So I know, these are services related to schematics. I would just suggest that we hold off for a week. Anything additional, so that we see what happens with the override in terms of it, you know, anything that hasn't been done yet?
I agree. The secondary estimate, the consultant said, could we do that in good faith? And I said, you should start doing that work.
Right. So anything that hasn't happened, so let's
We agree.
Yeah, okay.
There's been nothing that's happened besides the two items that they request start in good faith are completed.
Okay. So any questions, comments? So I'll move that we approve the following contract for owner project manager services, Leftfield. Baldwin School Owner Project Management Services for 45620, and Driscoll School Owner Project Manager Services for 45620. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have additional funding for the real estate force account, the amount of $25,000 in connection with the high school expansion, and this is the MBTA force account. We give them money and they spend it.
This is correct. So the way it works is we always have to keep a minimum of $25,000 in the force account. This is for legal services. They send us bills. We look at the bills, and the $25,000 has been used, so we're just refunding the account.
I noticed that the lawyers they hire are more expensive than the lawyers we hire.
I don't know if that's -- oh, maybe.
They're pretty expensive.
We get a discount.
Right. Well, the T ought to get a discount, but they don't care. As long as they're passing it on to us, they don't care.
They're not as aggressive as we are on these issues.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions, comments?
No, let me just say that, so to date, we're very pleased at the progress of the work with the MBTA. We seem to be moving forward.
Yes.
They're working with us. They have a very good, according to the staff, a very good project manager, which is really important. And, you know, I think in the long run, we're going to be shocked at how great the project turns out, really. Recently, we had a number of T riders who were not as thrilled about some of the aspects of the plan that the T had wanted, and we negotiated on their behalf with the T, and we were able to come to some different arrangements in terms of the fencing, et cetera. It's not everything everybody wanted, and, you know, not everything the T wanted, but it's an excellent compromise, and it's enabling us to move forward. So I'm really, really pleased with how it's going.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? I'll move that we approve the additional funding for the real estate force account, the amount of $25,000 in connection with the high school expansion project for the MBTA easement. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton, welcome.
Thank you. Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, moving right along. We have amendment number six, the amount of $36,960 with William Rohn Associates in connection with the Brookline High School Expansion Project. Mr. Masak, you again.
Yes, I'll be brief. There are two parts to this. Preparing survey documents for the MBTA easement to support the warrant article, which is going before May Town Meeting. And then another amendment was for a utility expediter. Working with our construction manager, there were some problems with utility lines, and having a utility expediter will help move that process forward expeditiously.
Any questions, comments? I'll move that we approve the amendment number six, the amount of $36,960 with William Rohn Associates in connection with the Brookline High School Expansion Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And you again, Mr. Masak?
Yes, I'll be done.
And we have a construction delivery method question of approving. The construction delivery method, construction management at risk for the Driscoll project and Baldwin School project, this is not an expenditure of money, this is an approval of a process.
This is correct. This is for construction manager at risk, the process. And in order to move that forward, you have to submit an application to the inspector general's office. The review by the inspector general's office takes four to six weeks in anticipation of what may be a successful vote. If the vote falls into place and we go ahead with the project, because of a four to six week project, at the end of May Town Meeting, we'll be able to continue with the process.
Okay. Any questions, comments? I'll move that we approve a construction management delivery method, construction management risk for the Driscoll and Baldwin School projects. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say it's been a pleasure working
Well, thank you.
And you will do this. Thank you.
Thank you. God, this is a love fest.
He always loved you. This is just an opportunity to say it.
Ah, Mr. Papasturgen, we now have a transfer within DPW for $30,000. Tell us about it.
DPW Commissioner Andrew Papasturgen. Request before you tonight is for an interdepartmental transfer of $30,000 from the personnel line item account in Public Works, excluding parks and water and sewer, to motor vehicle equipment, repair and maintenance to cover some existing invoices for bodywork, repairs to police vehicles primarily, and a few DPW vehicles as well, that incurred some damage over the winter. The total current bills are about $28,000, and we're going to set aside about $2,000 just for reserves to get us through the end of the fiscal year, hopefully. We won't need it, but the request is for your approval of $30,000 transfer from personnel to motor vehicle equipment, repair and maintenance.
Okay. Any questions, comments? This seems pretty straightforward and routine. I'll move that we approve the following transfer within the DPW appropriation, $30,000 from full-time permanent salaries to motor vehicle equipment, repair and maintenance. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a transfer within the Health and Human Services appropriation for $15,000. Mr. Casanova-Davis?
Good evening, Justice Casanova-Davis, Assistant Town Administrator, here to ask approval for the select board to move $15,000 from the salary line to some our utility accounts, electricity and natural gas, to help us prepare for the fiscal year end.
Okay. Any questions, comments? This is a pretty straightforward, routine request. I'll move that we approve the transfer within the Health and Human Services appropriation, $15,000 from permanent time salaries to $10,000 electricity, $5,000 natural gas. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we have a question of approving the police detail rate. Superintendent Morgan?
Good evening. I had to ask for a raise of $5 across the board on the police detail rate. It was a byproduct of the contract negotiations. Historically, we have done this outside of the contract. The last raise of the detail rate change was in 2012, and the $5 across the board raise averages about 1.57% a year over the course of that seven years.
So this is not something we pay, this is
No, it's a no cost item actually. There's a 10% surcharge that goes back to the town, and all details performed by the officers.
Okay. This raises our fees. Except if it's a town project, then we pay. It's not completely cost-free. Cost-free to the police department. Any questions?
What are our rates in respect to other communities?
As of 2016, the data I have as far as some of these effective July 1st, 2016, Watertown was at $53, Newton was 50, Norwell 51, Albert 50, Canton 5273, Concon $56, Dover 50, Paul River 50, Gloucester 50, Foxborough 49, Framingham 51.
So we're in the ballpark.
Effective as 2016.
Thank you for having that information.
Okay, I knew you would ask.
It's always better if you can
Yep.
You're more liable to get the right information, yes, in advance.
If you don't do it on the fly.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? I will move that we approve the new police detail rates, as detailed in the memo in our packet dated April 25th, 2019. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And
Oh, the police department just like to thank you for your duty as a police commissioner and your time, and we appreciate it. We wish you well in your further endeavors going forward.
Thank you, Superintendent Morgan. Okay, and now we have the question of authorizing the issuance of a request for proposals, to solicit proposals for the development of senior housing. At the Kent Street Municipal Parking Lot, we had a long presentation last week. I think the sense of this board was that we should go forward and see what kinds of proposals we get. Mr. Viola?
Joe Viola, Assistant Director for Community Planning. And again, I'd like to thank the board for hosting public hearing last week. We got a lot of good comments, a lot of good feedback, and certainly that'll feed back into the document as we prepare it for release. Moving forward, we're going to continue to do what we have been doing, which is consulting with town council, procuring with town council, procurement, engineering, and other relevant town staff to finalize the document, and to be sure, the, the RFP language clearly states that the town's priorities and requirements are being met in order to allow us to attract a, a high-quality developer who's got a long-established track record of creating affordable housing. There were a number of comments last week noting that time is of the essence in issuing this RFP, and while in general I agree with that, my takeaway was that I think the operative words were move carefully but quickly. So in the spirit of moving fast and carefully, we're asking the board to take a vote this evening to authorize the issuance of the RFP, subject to review of final language by the Director of Planning and Community Development. After your vote and before we issue the RFP, we will certainly scrutinize the document and review it for internally for clarity and consistency purposes, and we'll put together all the additional information that will be required, technical documentation that will allow for a developer to submit a, or inform response to the town. And if all goes well, we hope to be back before the town as soon as possible, in tow with a developer, a recommendation for developer designation, which, as we discussed last week, sets in, in motion a whole lot of other processes. This is just really the beginning stages of what we're trying to do. Next comes town meeting regulatory and, and discussion of financing.
Okay. Questions or comments?
So one of the things I heard last week was a question about the environmental information that may be included in the RFP. Where did we land on that? Is it in or is it out?
Where we landed, so there, depending on you ask, is, there's been a lot of different direction on where we should go. I'm leaning on town council's office. Town council's office has engaged specialized counsel to help us work through that issue and to ultimately inform the language that'll be in the RFP. Will we, will we do the testing? Will we not do the testing? I think we're, the final version of the RFP will be informed by our specialized outside counsel. To be honest, I don't know what the recommended language is yet. We've had a brief exchange with Attorney John Bukheit, and I have spoken with counsel. I'd be happy to report back. I do not know what the recommendation will be at this point.
I, I think we should just sort of know one way or the other. I, I am not the most informed person on this. I'm not an attorney, and certainly not an environmental attorney, but I'd sort of like to know where we land on it.
Be happy to report back.
I'm going to suggest that, that select board member, Hamilton, be designated as the board's liaison on this issue, and that she be included in the vote to approve it.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yes, that is. In fact, I, I had that very thought. I think that she's the most knowledgeable of us, and so it would be appropriate, and I assume that Mel will also weigh in on this RFP.
Right. So, okay. Any other questions or comments? So I'll move that we approve and authorize the issuance of a request for proposals for the Kent Station Street town-owned parking lot to solicit development proposals for affordable senior housing, subject to review and approval of the final RFP language by the Director of Planning and Community Development and select board member, Hamilton, on behalf of this board. All those in favor, please say ayes. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a few temporary licenses, and I'll move them in omnibus fashion. I'd like to move a temporary all kinds beverage sales license for the Hellenic Association of Boston to be, to be held on Saturday, May 4th, for Dance Group from 6:30 to 11:30 at 162 Goddard Avenue. Like, I'll also move a temporary all kinds beverage, all kinds beverage sales license to Lars Anderson to be held on, for, for an event to be held on Thursday, May 9th, for an exhibit opening reception from 5:30 to 10:30 at 15 Newton Street. Another Lars Anderson event on Saturday, May 11th, for a wedding, 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 15 Newton Street, and we have a number of temporary wine and malt beverage sales licenses for Pine Manor College at 400 Heath Street. Thursday, May 9th, for corporate dinner event from 6:00 to 9:00. Saturday, May 11th, for a wedding from 5:30 to 10:30. Tuesday, May 14th, for corporate luncheon from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Sunday, May 19th, for a graduation dinner from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturday, May 25th, for a bat mitzvah from 6:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., 10:30 p.m. That's a long bat mitzvah.
But they look good times roll.
I suspect that's a misprint, but we'll, we'll give them the license from 6:30 a.m.
As long as we're invited.
Yeah, right. Lastly, I'll, I'll move that we approve a temporary wine and malt beverage sales license to Art Bond Deborah Trotterman for a fundraiser on Saturday, May 11th, from 7:00 to 10:00 at 15 Marion Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, are they...
So the police department has reviewed all the paperwork and sees no reason to deny any of the applications.
Ah, okay. Thank you. I almost missed that. All those in favor of all those motions, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I think we'd like to hold item 7O, which is an alternate manager license, alternate manager designation, so there's some issues that we'd like to talk about and clear up. Moving ahead to our regular, our calendar, and we have a Recreation Department vacancy, Resource Management and Performance Analyst. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and Chairman Wazinski. My name's Lee Jackson. I'm the Acting Director at Recreation, and I'm here tonight to request your approval for an authorization to hire for Brookline Recreation to fill a current vacancy as in the Resource Manager position. This role is critical to our leadership success. They oversee our facilities at Recreation. They work very closely with Custodial Services to make sure that we provide a clean and safe place for people to recreate, and they also serve on the leadership team in terms of execution for projects and programs. So I'm here tonight to ask for your approval.
Okay. Questions, comments? So I'll move that we approve the, filling the following vacancy in the Recreation Department for a Resource Manager Performance Analyst. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you so much, and Chairman Wazinski, I want to thank you, too, on behalf of the Recreation Department. You've done incredible service for us and for the commission as well. The Parks and Recreation Commission speak very highly of you, and so I want to thank you for your service. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Don't let it get to your head.
Right.
Well, for a little while.
The duration of the meeting.
We have a vacancy in the Building Department for a local building inspector. Commissioner Bennett.
Good evening. Dan Bennett, Building Commissioner. Yes, I'm here to, for an authorization to hire a local inspector. The most recent vacancy is Robert Dugan. He is leaving for a community down on the South Shore closer to his home.
Any questions or comments from the board?
It's a critical position, so...
Right. Yeah. Yeah, this is one that has to be filled. There's a lot of building going on, as Commissioner Bennett notes.
Yes, there is.
Okay. So let's approve filling the position. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And we have our last budget review, and how did, how did, how did that happen? That you got off the hook until now.
We had a number of delays internally for one reason or another, and I think last week I had asked about whether we were on the schedule or not, and we were not, and I think if I didn't raise it, I might have been able to sneak away with not having to come in front of the board, but...
But that's not good form.
It's not good, no. They caught it, and we're here. I've got Charlie Simmons here to answer questions on the Public Buildings Division, but yeah, I'm here to, you know, present the, the Building Department budget for FY '20. I would like to thank Mel, Melissa, and Justin for all their assistance in preparing this, this budget in this, in this cycle. The Building Department has three divisions. We do code enforcement and inspections. We have a Construction Division that constructs, manages, and prepares our CIP projects, and then we have the Public Buildings Division that's headed by Charlie Simmons. This year's budget has a moderate increase. Most of it is part of the third-year override. We did get some funding, and we're using that for a couple of things, repair and maintenance on the town and school side, and a new position to work under our Energy Management System Director. The position would assist him in the programming of our energy management systems and implementing new technology and software, and that is something that was recommended in the Matrix Report, and as we proceed through this budget process, we are following the Matrix Guidelines and the reports that they had recommended, and Mel and Melissa have been very good in, in helping us attain that, those goals. In addition to our regular increases, we have some capital requests. Has to do with vehicles. We keep maintaining our vehicles and try to keep them up to date. We have some lifts for the tradesmen. We have our computers that we lease and some software upgrades, upgrades with our server for the Energy Management System. With respect to code enforcement, the staffing continues to be something that we, we deal with. I did hire a new Deputy Building Commissioner, Joe Braga, that took the place of, of Mike Yanovich. We have a couple of retirements. Our operations manager is retiring next month, and Bill Murphy retired earlier this month, and we are working on, on filling and getting those positions. We'll be in front of you shortly to fill those positions. Our HVAC tradesmen, we continue to work with the, excuse me, the Personnel Department, Human Resources in getting good candidates. The construction industry is doing so well that we're, we're having trouble getting anyone in with some of the salaries that we're, you know, we're paying, but we are working with HR, and we, we will hopefully get that resolved shortly. We continue to progress with our seller permitting system that we're in our second year, and we work with IT, Fung, and Tom Richards. They have been instrumental in getting this thing up and running and keeping it going, and every day there's a change, and every day it gets better. Our goal now is to bring in other divisions and other departments. We're working with DPW, Fire Department, and one other department is coming on as well. Health Department, we want to try to work with them on their approval process. They're in the system, but we don't really connect internally, and we're working on, on bringing that along as well. We reviewed and issued more than 6,800 permits this past year. It's the second year in a row we've been in that area. We continue to process complaints, which is something that we hadn't really done before, or we didn't really manage them as well as we could have in the old system, and we're up to about 30 to 35 a month, and that keeps getting higher. My goal is to try to resolve most of them within a week. Some of them a little bit more complicated than others, but I am trying, yes.
Are those code complaints?
There, it's any type of complaint. So it could be a noise complaint, it could be working without a permit, it could be working before 6 o'clock, it could be, you know, Airbnb, any, any type of those things, zoning, building, all sorts of enforcement.
Wow.
All right. We continue to work with the Treasurers Office. We had, we did a mailing with the Treasurers Office to try to satisfy the multifamily inspections that we do. We had some facade collapses over the past couple of years. In order to get more people notified of what their responsibilities are, we did a mailing through the tax bills, and that was, we got a pretty good response. We got over 300 applications that we wouldn't have other, otherwise received. My next step would be to reach out to some of the management companies that manage these large condominiums and multifamily buildings and do some mailings to them, notify them of their responsibility, and hopefully that'll, you know, keep that ball rolling and get, you know, additional inspections in for us as well. With respect to the Construction Division, Ray and Tony, I'll be short. You know, they've got a very full load ahead of them. They are working diligently. They are doing the best they can to keep up with the high school expansion project. Tony is running that. The Building Commission, I think, as you know, kind of revisited how we're going to handle these projects. We're doing an outside OPM that was, that has given Ray and Tony, you know, some relief, but as the projects move forward and as we progress and get into construction and move forward, we'll keep analyzing and speaking with Mel and Melissa and the commission, Building Commission, on staffing. I know that's been a concern by the Advisory Committee. It's been a concern by, you know, any number of people, and at this point, we're, we're okay. Again, what happens in the election and a town meeting will be another indicator as how these projects move forward. We've got the Baldwin School, we've got the Driscoll School, we've got peers coming up, so all these projects are, are there, and, you know, we're ready to handle them as best we can. I would like to turn it over to Charlie. If you have any questions, I can answer them after, but Charlie will address anything with the Public Buildings Division.
Okay. So Dan covered most of the subjects I was going to discuss, but I just want to add that we work closely with the School Department on the Coolidge Corner School, which has been open and is working out well. There's some defects and bugs that we're taking care of. We tinker with all new buildings, but it's, it's a beautiful building, and I continue to work with them on the plans and specs for the Ninth School and the Driscoll School. And the high school, when it starts, my staff will be there to help with the closing of the older section that'll be torn down and 111 Cypress. So with that, any questions you may have? Yeah?
What was the biggest surprise with the Coolidge Corner School opening?
I think the complexity of the HVAC system. It's incredibly large, very, very complicated, and there were always lots of little bugs, and the building is not air-conditioned per se, but it has a dehumidification system. So there were certain little bugs here and there, and before school started, it was working well, and of course, just before school starts, something happens, but it's working all fine now.
How's the level of permits this year as compared to past years? It's my perception that there's a lot of construction activity going on, not only in town here, but throughout the region.
Yeah, I mean, so we do have, there's a lot of very large projects going on. You know, we have Brookline Place that continues, the new hotel, 700 Brookline Ave. We've got two 40Bs at 455 Harvard and 420 Harvard. Those are underway. There are some things, you know, in the pipeline that have been broken ground, but some things that they're talking with, you know, planning and building on with respect to going through a zoning process. The smaller, the littler permits, some of the renovations to the two, three, and four families, those might have slowed down a bit, but we're still getting a lot of the bathroom renovations and kitchen renovations, and that happens typically when a home is sold and somebody new buys it. So that, that's something that will always be happening.
Don't go away, Dan. Pleased to hear that you have found a replacement for Mike Yanovich, and I am wondering how you're going to be restarting the site review plan, study, or the, the plans to implement or design and implement a system for that.
So interestingly enough, we did just get back, so part of the whole recall... So interestingly enough, we did just get back, so part of the whole recodification of the zoning bylaw, this whole site review will be part of that. And we just did receive back from General Code their preliminary review of our bylaw. And we have until, I want to guess somewhere in the middle of July, to review that and provide some answers to General Code. So that, the whole recodification had kind of been put on the shelf a little bit till we could fill some of these positions. In addition to our positions, we have, in planning, you know, the zoning coordinator position has been vacant, and there's been a planning position over there. So we're working with planning to fill those as well. And as these positions get filled and new people come in, it's actually probably pretty timely that they would be, you know, have their, you know, head in the new code and try to provide, you know, a new set of eyes looking at our building code that really hasn't been revisited in, you know, more than 50 years. So I look at it as a positive. But it has been delayed a bit, but we are getting back on track now with General Code and this review, and that'll get us into the meetings again and setting up some of these processes to figure out how we want to move forward.
Okay. Well, as you know, I'm Chair of the Tree Protection Study Committee, and we had sponsored a bylaw, and we're successful in adding tree protection to the stormwater bylaw, but we're looking to site plan review
Yes.
for further protections. And I know it's been on hold, so I think I need to maybe confer with you and Joe Braga about the timing of the Tree Committee to kind of get reactivated and figure out where we're going.
And, you know, in the meantime, the Tree Protection Plan did go under the stormwater review that's done by Peter Ditto.
Correct.
So that has been successful, and that has been being enforced. But yes, it is, you know, I know there's been a call to provide a new site plan review process within the zoning bylaw, and we'll be looking at that.
Okay.
In addition.
Great. Thank you.
Going back to Charlie for a second, I noticed in the objectives, there's a plan to hire an additional tradesman in your division to help with evening work and do more of the work in-house as opposed to hiring outside contractors. Can you just give a flavor as to what type of tradesman that would be and sort of the frequency with which these evening or perhaps even late-night repairs are required?
Yes. The person I'm planning on hiring is an Energy Systems Applications Technician.
Okay.
Sort of a cross between an HVAC technician and an IT person.
Okay.
And this person will help us, help Mark Sackel with the Energy Management Systems in the field. Right now, we subcontract all that work. It's very, very expensive, especially with the systems we have now. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd just like to highlight in your accomplishments, the lead and water project. And I take it that we've tested all of our schools and have mitigated any lead found either in the pipes or in the fixtures or equipment in our schools.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll just, I know a lot of the burden of all the big construction projects we have going is falling on your department. I've been working with Ray on the Driscoll Project, and, you know, Ray is just a pleasure to work with, as is Tony.
And I would second that for the High School. High School is extraordinarily complex, and I think that Ray has done a very admirable job of getting us through the thicket.
Right. I would also add that with respect to the Baldwin Project, Ray's been very, very helpful in helping us sort of get through some of the complexities as well as deal with some of the controversies that have arisen in connection with that project.
So, keep it up.
Try.
Anything else? Okay, thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're running about 15 to 20 minutes late from our eight o'clock public hearings. We have one more agenda item before we get into the public hearings, and that's the Sustainability and Climate Action Summit. Zoe Lynn, welcome. This is your maiden voyage.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Glad to be here. So my request is simple and quick. I'm here to ask you guys to, so we're pulling together a sustainability summit, Sustainable and Climate Action Summit, the Planning Department with Allison, Richard, Blessing. And I'm here to ask if the Select Board would host, sponsor, and participate in this as the town works to lead on its 2050 zero emissions target. And I'm sure you have lots of questions about what that means, and I'm happy to answer them. I'll start with those questions or structure of what I'm going to do.
So why don't you tell us a little about the summit and what you're asking of us?
Yeah, so we, I have asked almost all departments to participate, and all department heads almost have signed off, to be there, to collaborate with community members, to deliver on six-month action priorities for climate mitigation and sustainability integration. A lot of folks would value your presence, and I believe it would help you when we came back with initiatives, understanding what initiatives we're bringing forward. By participate, I think being there, hearing, adding your insight and expertise when necessary, I think is what I'm asking.
And community members going to be participating in this, too?
Yes.
Okay.
We've been working to, we've asked many community groups, Climate Action Brookline, Mothers Out Front. This concept has been evolving, but they are committed to helping the town get to, the town and community get to climate neutral. And in that part, they've joined the alliance. They're here to help us deliver on this collaboratively together. And yes, I believe have a good support for it.
Okay, and this is going to be happening June 5th at 6:30 at the Coolidge Corner School Cafeteria?
Yes.
Okay.
Just for the board's information, I, Werner Lowey and I, co-chairs of Climate Action Committee, have met on a couple of occasions with Zoe and talked about the structure and how we would get information and feed information to these groups, help get us an outcome in terms of buy-in, really, of the various voices in town about climate issues. And, you know, I think this has real possibility of helping us understand and moving in a direction that will get us, hopefully, the biggest bang for the climate buck, if you will. You know, we've already done aggregation, but now we're working on an opt-up, not through this, but I've been meeting with Mothers Out Front people about this, about the campaign. And so we're moving ahead on a few different fronts. But I think this will hopefully coalesce into a more cohesive and collaborative method of working forward on climate issues, so that we're not all scattered in different directions, and we can apply ourselves to meeting our climate action goals as set out in the Climate Action Plan.
Yes, thank you. And I think that's a good point that Nancy's bringing up about the, we are kind of working sometimes in parallel to each other. Sometimes we're maybe even working in conflict, not intentionally. And if we were to be collaborating and work collectively, I think we could really hit some of these targets. That will make everyone feel hopeful that we could continue to hit targets. I think it'll also be more efficient and cost-effective, so therefore saving resources to hit more of emission goals. To hit a 2050 zero emissions target takes a lot of work, and we need to be strategic to do this well and to actually make it happen. I would love to answer any more questions, specific questions. I'm happy to. Details or non-details?
Select person Green?
Yeah. I think this is a great idea, as I understand it. Because like you said, people are going in, or groups of people going in parallel directions and sort of missing some of the limitations, costs, priorities that other entities are struggling with. And coming together enables us to make sure that we're not sort of talking out of various sides of the mouth.
Yeah.
And sort of missing the ability to actually accomplish goals that are doable and practical and will bring value to our climate, you know, goals.
Yep. And there's a lot of value, a lot of innovation can come from collaboration done well. And so if we do the summit well, and people show up with their best faith effort to do this well and really commit, we really could come up with new ways to move forward as a team. We also will start, you know, we're just going to, our goal will be that evening to just come up with a short-term plan. But as doing that, short-term plan will help us vision out further, see where we might have some things that the seed gets planted. And then, you know, six months down the road, we're able to develop that further. And we won't have the pressure of getting it all figured out this evening, just enough to, what's our next step? How can we integrate this into our current processes? How can we budget for this appropriately? Because I got to be able to cover costs and staffing resources and other things.
Yeah.
So you're actually touching on the point that I wanted to make, which is that your goal is to kind of focus on short-term, because sometimes 2050 feels a little insurmountable.
Yes.
There's so much we don't know about what the landscape will look like between now and then, let alone then. So I'm really happy that this is kind of talking about short-term things so that we can find the common ground.
Small bites.
And I hope this is kind of the first of many continuing summits.
Yeah, so we'd like to run this as a pilot, and if all goes well, run it as a pilot with the intention of doing it biannually. The Select, if you guys approve, it'll be the Select Board's Sustainability and Climate Action Summit biannual to help us move forward collectively across the town, to meet these targets, to actually really, do we have any neighbors that we want to beat, you know, and show them how we can do zero emissions? And in these six-month iterations, get better at the summit, get better at how we deliver this together. Hopefully, that we'll learn from this, and then each one, we will improve as a team.
I want to pick up on something that Select Board member Hamilton said. I think it's great that we're using this first one as a pilot, but I think one of the goals walking out should be to continue those conversations and relationships.
Yes.
Because not only is there potential that organizations are unintentionally working in opposition to one another, one organization may have a problem, may be stuck on something, and there's a subject matter expert someplace else that can quickly help to unlock the key.
Yeah.
So keeping those lines of communications and mapping the ecosystem to some extent, to know who to turn to, to have a small question answered, which may be significant in terms of an impediment to progress.
Yeah, and develop, going on off of that a little bit further, one detail that I didn't get into when I opened was that as we line up these priorities, the goal would be to develop internal and external working teams led by the Sustainability, your new Sustainability Office, me, and so that we're delivering these working teams in parallel. And I'm the link between those teams to help deliver on this, these missing knowledge gaps. So there may be a team with the Department of Public Works and myself, internal, but there also may be a team with Mothers Out Front on the opt-up campaign and myself, and we'll be delivering on these in parallel. And then the Sustainability Office, one of its main objectives will be to help connect these teams during the interim, during the sixth period when we're not talking, you know, as a big group. Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to mention just two small things. I like the fact that you use the word, the magic word, innovation. I think that bringing, you know, all these groups together and forcing each individual group to try to factor in another entity's groups' concerns, limitations, et cetera, really is a way to force innovation.
Data shows it. Science shows it.
And that's important because, you know, we don't have the answers right now to everything. But, you know, we need to be open and innovative to get there. The other thing is, we're competing with our neighbors, but maybe we also want to find opportunities to work with certain of our neighbors.
Of course, yes.
For example, you know, be-
Only if we're beating them, though.
Well, yeah, at some point, you know, we're all in this together.
Exactly.
And, you know, if we can use what we're learning, the innovative ideas that we come up with, to sort of induce or incentivize surrounding entities, whether it's, you know, municipalities or entities like universities, to sort of improve their functioning in this area. That's great.
Well, you're exactly right. We cannot be sustainable in a bubble. We need to do this together. And together means internally, with our community, and then with the larger region. And this is exactly right. And to your point on innovation, science shows that collaboration is tough. It's very tough, but the results are very good. So everyone's going to have to show up, and we will feed you, but you will be there to work, because we're going to actually collaborate. And collaboration means you're going to be thinking. Your brain's going to be using glucose. We're going to supply you with more glucose for the evening, and you will walk out exhausted. But the results will be, we will have working teams that are ready to go, that, a bunch of ideas that we've put forward, and those teams then will start working out the kinks. And-
Chocolate or fruit?
We have had chocolate requests, yes.
Okay.
And I think I only show up for chocolate.
I think Select Board member Hamilton mentioned that the chocolate was a requirement, and we have made a note. So now I will add fruit.
Okay. Dark chocolate is the healthy chocolate.
The healthy chocolate, yes. We have a lot of requests coming in. We will try to meet this food requirement.
No good affairs.
Yes.
So let me move to that, we sponsor a sustainability, that we authorize the sponsoring of a Sustainability and Climate Action Summit. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you.
Okay. Okay, on to our eight o'clock public hearings. We're running about 20 to 25 minutes late. Let's see if we can make up some time. So the first one up is a question of approving the application of the transfer from Kalin Inc. doing business with Chef Chow to Le Mai, doing business as Le Mai Hot Pot, of an all-alcohol beverage sales license at 230 Harvard Street, Brookline. The proposed seating is 72, and the proposed hours are 11:30 to 10:00 p.m., Sunday to Thursday, Friday and Saturday, 11 to 11:00. And proposed entertainment of recorded music. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman and the End of the Board. My name is Awajah. I'm attorney with office in Boston, 145 Tremont Street. And with me tonight is, I call him Michael, but his name actually is Dong.
It's Dong Pan.
Dong Pan.
I'm not going to try to pronounce it.
It's all on the tongue.
Actually, that's an easier one. Dong Pan is a 100% chef of this Le Mai Inc., and it's going to be called Le Mai Hot Pot. And that is for 230 Harvard Street. And now is Chef Chow, Chef Chow Restaurant in Brookline. And Dong Pan and his family, this is going to be, is their third restaurant. They started first one in New Hampshire. It's also a hot pot place. And then the second one in Providence, Rhode Island. And now they can start a third one. And they are planning on fourth one in Baltimore. But this is the third one. And it took a long while for us to get here after we submitted our location package last December. But here we are. It's going to be, it's going to be, as the Chair just corrected, it's a 72-seat-capacity restaurant. And they are going to, the request here is to, for the transfer of an all-alcohol beverage license and entertainment fee license. And we have a talk to the landlord, and it's going to be a lease assignment from the current owner. And it's going to be all the way until 2033. It's a long lease. They're going to take over. And they are confident they're going to be able to do it. But Mr. Pan, Mr. Pan Dong has a very clear-headed restaurant manager, and he started, as I just said, in New Hampshire as a manager, and Rhode Island as a manager. And he has trained his successors for both restaurants. So he's now full-time here for the Brookline store. And we are here, the request for approval of the transfer application. And of course, Pongta Pan Dong is ready to answer whatever question you have regarding their planned operation of this new restaurant.
Okay. Okay. This looks very authentic.
It is very authentic Chinese food.
Right.
I have a question.
Yeah?
So you know that there's another hot pot place opening very soon.
Yes, right, on the Beacon Street.
Yeah.
I think it's called Six Pot.
I love hot pot.
You love hot pot.
So I'm very excited to have choices. But are you concerned at all about another restaurant offering similar?
I'm not really concerned because Brookline is a big town.
It is. It's the largest town in Massachusetts.
Yes, it is. So, and our authentic food, because I train myself, I went back to China every six months to train myself. Because I myself prepare, prepare all the soup base, spicy, and then all the mushroom broth, tomato broth, beef broth, all kinds of stuff. So all the spicy pepper we have is imported directly from China. Of course, we have, we do have the approval of the FDA. So I'm very, I'm very confident because Brookline need an authentic Chinese food. Because we have so many like Chinese, American food, you know, and then we need one authentic Chinese food.
Right.
Well, hot pot is also one of my favorites and.
Thank you.
So I'm really, when are you opening?
Probably will take about two to three months to do the renovation because we don't touch the kitchen. All we do is change the floor and the new painting, new ceiling, and different type, you know, special design, the table set. So hopefully it will be open by late August or maybe early September.
Are you going to have the cooking facility in the table as many hot pot places do?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, looks like an excellent menu and, you know, let us know when you open.
Yes, I will.
Select person Green.
I'm gonna miss Chef Chow because we go there way too often to take out when we're too lazy or too rushed to do dinner at home. But this looked interesting. Am I incorrect in calling it, quote, "authentic Chinese soul food"?
It's comfortable.
A lot of the dishes, I sort of recall from my heritage in the South, which is basically food that, you know, the poor people of a country, of a culture eat. For example, pig intestines, you know, pig brain. I mean, that, these are very interesting and I always like to try different foods. But I think, you know, you probably want to focus on educating people as to, you know, these new types of delicacies that you bring to Brookline. I mean, I, I mean, it sounds great, but.
That's only a couple of the things that are here.
Yeah, but they stick out. It's.
From which region of China is this particular hot pot cuisine?
The cuisine is originally from the Sichuan, Chongqing. So they're famous is.
Chengdu?
Yes, yes, Chengdu. They're famous is spicy. It's very spicy.
Like that.
I have two questions. First, I assume you sat down and had a conversation with our police department about some of our local liquor license regulations. Can you just share some of the things that you heard in that meeting and some of the requirements that we have on you as a manager of record?
Yes, as managers in Brookline, I do know that there's always has to be full-time trained manager to be in the restaurant. So I'm a full-time, so we will hire an additional assistant manager to take care of the place while I'm gone for.
And make sure you come and tell us who that assistant manager is gonna be. So there's somebody on liquor license if you're not on the premises. What, what did you learn about keeping a book in the restaurant? What has to be in that, that logbook?
I spoke with the liquid, Mr. Raskin. Yes, I spoke to him and he did share a lot of information with me about the binder stuff. So, but I haven't had a chance to go everything all through yet. I did print it in my package. So I believe we still, if we're planning on September, we still have, I still have like three months to go more in detail.
That's fine. Just make sure that you review those local regulations. I will warn you that we do do undercover stings. We send in an underage individual to come and try and buy alcohol from you. And we take the service of alcohol and particularly underage individuals very seriously. I for one hope that we don't see you back here for some sort of disciplinary hearing.
Yes, I do understand. The one thing that I train my people, just no ID, no drinks. This is the one most important things.
And good policy.
And then my second question, which is far more simple, is I see that you've got four parking spaces connected to your lease. Is that, are any of those gonna be used for delivery vehicles? Are you planning on having a third-party delivery service? Are you planning on doing delivery at all?
We will not do in the delivery at all.
Okay, any other?
I don't have much.
Fair enough.
Any other question? This is a public hearing. Or is it? It is a public hearing. So if there's any members of the public who wish to speak on this license, now is your time. I see none. Any other questions, comments from the board? So I will move that we approve the application of the transfer from Kailin Inc. Doing Business as Chef Chow Restaurant to Lei Mai Doing Business as Lei Mai Hot Pot of an all-alcohol beverage license at 230 Harvard Street, Brookline. Proposed seating is 72 and the hours, proposed hours are Sunday to Thursday, 11:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday, Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. With the proposed entertainment will be recorded music. And I'm going to suggest we add the recommendation of the police department, this is the police department, that the final license is subject to Mr. Pan and Ms. Liu submitting a full set of fingerprints taken by the police department for the purpose of conducting a state and national criminal background check. And that Mr. Pan submits a certificate showing he's completed the Department of Fire Services' crowd manager training. Okay? Everyone clear on the motion? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
And we have a public hearing on an inflamables license, and this is an underground tank with 1,500 gallons for Boston Children's Hospital, Washington LLC located at Two Brookline Place. We have seen you before.
About two weeks ago. So Tim Sullivan of Goulston Stores here on behalf of Boston Children's Hospital requesting an inflamables license to install an underground storage tank at Two Brookline Place. Just as the last application, it is for storage of fuel to support the generator for life safety at the facility. So if the.
Sounds important.
Elevators, lines, all that sort of stuff.
Okay, any questions from the board? This seems pretty straightforward. Any, this is a public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak on this license? I see none. Any other questions, comments from the board? I'll move that we approve the application for the key storage and use of one underground tank of approximately 1,500 gallons for Boston Children's Hospital, Washington Street LLC located at Two Brookline Place. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I presume this is the main event of the night. And this is a noise bylaw waiver. And this is National Grid applying for a noise bylaw waiver in connection with work to be done to replace a gas main from the intersection of Beacon Street to 700 Washington, from the intersection of Beacon Street up to 700 Washington Street. And I know this is a project that has been very disruptive. So, Mr. Barkus, what is happening?
Chairman, members of the board, John Barkus, National Grid. I'm here tonight to request a noise variance hearing for a project that is ongoing during the day right now. It was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago that it's causing a lot of disruption for business owners in the area. And we had a small community meeting. And mostly business owners showed up for the meeting and we came up with an idea of coming to you, members of the board, to see if we could go ahead with a noise variance to work nights on this project. So that's what I'm here for tonight. We'd like to be able to do this construction work Monday through Friday with the options of Saturdays, working from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. And that's where we are now, so.
So I zoned out. What hours you requesting?
So we would request.
10:00 p.m. to?
10:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. 12-hour shift.
Okay.
So how noisy you're gonna have, you know, those trucks with the backups and?
Yeah, so as you know, I've been in front of this board before in the past and have been approved noise variance hearings with restrictions put on them. This job is replacing approximately 450 feet of 12- and 16-inch gas pipe and also replacing a regulator station. This regulator station is dated back to roughly 1930 and the pipe is dated back to the 1925 era. This regulator station is critical for this town. It's one of our main regulator stations that has to be functioning during the winter season. So we need to be able to remove the pipe, install pipe, remove the regulator station and install the new regulator station. So there will be quite a bit of noise. On top of the nights, we will require some day work for safety, installing and removing the regulator station that's there now and then installing the new one. It's just a matter of safety to be able to do that during the day. So some of the restrictions we have right now is with a nine o'clock stop due to traffic and then also the sidewalk work where the regulator station stands now or sits now. We need to be able to do that while school is out of session. So we already do have some restrictions and on average, it takes approximately an hour to set up the job and an hour to break down the job. So we're real just, we're at the minimum right now, so.
So what hours would this replace?
These, these hours will replace the daytime work.
So the daytime work goes from?
Right now, we're working 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. But we break down, it takes approximately an hour to break down, so. We're usually off the road about 4:00, 4:30 the latest.
So do you believe that by doing this from 10:00 at night to 10:00 in the morning, which is a longer period of time, you would be able to shorten the period of this project, construction of this project?
That would be our hope. You know, schedules right now have us on track to be completed at November 5th. So we would hope that we would be able to complete that by able, working more hours. Schedules, you know, as you know yourself, schedules are hard to keep, especially in the construction field. But that is the goal. The goal does have some fluctuation, you know, with our schedule right now to work to be done a little bit before that, but with the rain and weather, you know, holidays, events in the town, we do shut down, you know, recommended times.
So by, by working at night from 10:00 to 10:00, will the businesses have clear access during the day? So, so where the, where will the equipment be parked? Not in front of the businesses, right?
No, no, we'll make sure that they're parked in either approved spots, parking spots, even if we had to, like we've done before in the past, we've rented lots. I know spaces in the area are limited as it is, so we would definitely not take up spots. The only time we'd be taking up spots is for the equipment while we're working, but we will move spots so that they're not on the street for the day.
So in looking at the diagram, why don't you bring the diagram up so that our vast TV audience can?
I don't know.
You can hold it by the podium. So looking at the top of the di, so I'm just thinking of, you know, where there are residences. So, so this is the intersection of Beacon and Washington and.
So this is?
And Stoked Pizza is the last, right, okay.
And you're already doing the work there now because I know that I drive by that intersection quite a bit.
Right, and this is, this is to change the hours of that work.
Right.
Yep, so right now, I hate not to use the microphone, so just while I hold this. But right now, the bulk of the work is taking place right through this section here. The regulator station is located more towards the schoolyard where we've removed and put in another fence. And then we're replacing and putting in another new fence. So the bulk of the work is happening right here in front of the storefronts and it's a huge inconvenience to them. And we're not here to, you know, make anybody's life miserable. We know we do it to residents a lot, we know we do it to store owners and business owners and just even commuters going through. But this is a critical job that has to continue. And we're gonna work with the community to make sure that we do what's in the best interest for everybody. You know, a lot of the business owners showed up a couple of weeks ago at that meeting and there are valid concerns that people just don't want to go there if they're out in front of their store.
Yeah.
And, you know, again, you know, somebody will just drive by instead of pulling over and going in.
Yep.
We've heard those concerns and I think we are concerned as well, but, you know, I'm especially worried about how many residents are in the neighborhood and how many of them are gonna hear those backup lights at 2:00 a.m.
So.
Those are the most, some of the most.
Where I was headed was, let's point out where the residents, right on the corner, there are no residents.
Right.
So the, the closest residential building is the building, the yellow up in the upper That, that's a residential, and that's the only residential building, perhaps within earshot of this.
So have you had any complaints from, from, I know that the businesses have been quite concerned and I share that concern, but I'm wondering if you've had any complaints from residents in the area about?
As of today, we have not had any complaints from residents.
And did you invite them to this meeting?
We did. We took out a public notice as well. And also for the, the small community meeting that we had, I was, the town provided me approximately 35 to 40 emails. I guess there was some construction a couple of years ago in that area. They call it the Washington Square area. So they provided me with some emails and I sent out an email with that as well for that community meeting. And I got two replies back that they could not attend and I also got seven replies back saying that the email address was invalid. So I have not received any other updates or any emails regarding concerns, you know, the ones that are, the bulk of the concerns right now are from the business owners.
So in addition to the fact that these are very old pipes and probably need replacement, have you documented leaks in this area?
So in this area here, there was two leaks that were existing grade-three leaks that will then be resolved and that'll be taken out of commission with the new pipe that's that's going in. This is more of a system upgrade with the regulator station, which we're mandated to change. You know, the one that's there now, if that was to ever fail, you know, one, we could lose gas and it just would not be a, a good situation for any of us in the town. So, there's only been documented two grade three leaks in that area.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing. We have, so the proposal is to do this work 10:00 to 10:00, 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM.
Yeah, and with, but also just keep in mind that we will need to do some of the day work under the day permit that is existing. So, I just want that-
Can there be notice, or, there might be days where there'll be, it'll be less disruptive to the businesses. Can, can, is, is there any way to work with folks?
So, with me tonight is supervisor from National Grid, Bang Nugent, and he is on-site for the duration of the job. He's in contact with the existing abuddhas right there now. And if we're gonna be working days, we're gonna give 24-hour notice to let them know that we're gonna be out there in 24 hours. Most of the day work might be able to give more notice up to 72 hours, that would be the goal, but it would be at minimum 24 hours.
Okay, this is a public hearing. This is, this is your chance. Mr. Dizian.
Good evening. Sam Dizian, I live at 765 Washington Street, which is five houses down the street. I definitely support the night work. I have not heard much noise from the existing daytime work, but it has basically shut down the entire street, almost all the way to the gas station near Whole Foods during the entire day and it's a total mess. And many people I know just don't even try to drive by there anymore. They, they take some of the back roads, which has probably created some traffic issues on some of the side streets. I know there's a lot of business people here who have a whole range of other very strong opinions on this, but from a resident perspective, I also would encourage you to figure out a way to do it faster. You know, there might be, and obviously, this is not my expertise, but it seems that if you're only opening 400 feet of street, why wouldn't you just do the jackhammering over a day or two, be done with that, plate everything, and then you can save all that noise for later. Also, with 10 hours each day, wouldn't, wouldn't that significantly speed up the timeline? If you were already anticipating November, now you'll be working twice as fast and have more hours, so why would that timeline not change?
Yeah.
Yeah, come to the microphone, Mr. Barkus.
And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your support. That is the goal, to be able to also move this process along a lot faster. We did look at possibly bringing in two crews and working around the clock, but we just thought we need to give some people a break from noise and construction. And then also, we looked at, you know, could you put two crews on at a, on a night shift, you know, one on one side, one on the other, just for, because of the congestion already there? It wouldn't be really safe and also, the congestion would probably cause more, sometimes more is, is less. And then, the jackhammer and stuff like that, what's going on now is because of the volume size of the pipe that's there in the ground and, and the pipe that we're putting in, it's very tedious work and we have to kinda go kinda slow until we find that exact corridor where the pipe can go. Once we find that exact corridor, it moves a little bit quicker. It's always the beginning of the project that seems to go real slow and the end that seems to goes real slow, kinda like when the foundation to a house goes in. It's like, geez, they've, they've been putting that foundation in for a long time. And then, all of a sudden, next thing you know, you look and the building is up. And then, all of a sudden, it takes a while to do the paint and, you know, the plaster and stuff like that. So, it's similar to that. Right now, we're kind of in still those beginning stages and we're, we're trying to grab a good grasp on it and, and move forward. So, that's how it's working right now, but that is our goal. We, we do not wanna be up there any longer than anybody else because we have so much work up there. If we can finish this job, we can move on to another job somewhere else. So, without a doubt, it should take some time off our schedule, absolutely.
Sure.
Hi, my name's Toram Miller. I'm the owner of Stoke Pizza and also, we are very directly impacted by this. You know, to move this to night work seems to be the only solution. I mean, it is really an unreasonable burden to place on the small businesses to six days a week, seven months, perhaps longer. I've already seen my, my lunch business drop by a third and it coincided directly with the start of this at the beginning of April. It, it, it's just truly something as a small business that we won't be able to sustain. If I, if it continues on that trend, I will effectively be out of business. We are all small businesses in the square and it is a business district. So, to place this work in the middle of business hours is, is, it just seems truly unreasonable. John, one question I would have for you is what percentage of day, day work do you anticipate? You're saying some day work will be necessary, but, I mean, you're saying some, some could be 75%.
Yes, sure. So, if we're allowed to continue with the night work as scheduled, then we were looking at 90% of the work could be completed at night with a 10% during the day. And the 10% would be, again, the large installation of the regulator station and the connections. So, roughly 90%, could be 85%, but that's the ballpark figure.
And that would be happening further down with, with school, with regulators in front of the school and not directly in front of the businesses on the corner of Beacon and Washington.
So, the regulator station is located right by the schoolyard and that would be probably closer to, let's call it, you know, 7%. And then, also, you would possibly have a connection that would go on in the Beacon Street intersection that might have to go night into day and then work continuously through the day. So, if we're permitted to work 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM, we might continue that and continue forward through the day to finish that one area. So, that's how it could balance out. Again, you know, we're, we're trying to move it as quickly as we can.
Yeah, you know, again, you know, the fact that the, Washington Square is made up of small businesses. There's, there's no really big, you know, you have Starbucks, of course, but, but other than that, it's, we're all small businesses and we don't have the deep pockets to sustain this impact like a McDonald's or, or Starbucks is, does. And it, hearing National Grid wanting to move this and, and they can work more efficiently during night work, I, I just don't see any argument against it because this is a business district. We are not in a residential district and we're the ones who are unfortunately bearing the brunt of this and it is significantly impactful. And I know there's businesses that have been in business a lot longer than I have in the square and they've seen these past projects and how impactful they have been. And, you know, this, it's not hyperbole to say that I will be out of business if this continues.
Sure.
Could I ask another question in terms of, are, are the businesses open every single day, seven days a week, or is there?
Most are. We, we operate seven days a week. We, we are open at 11:00 in the morning and we do, we do lunch seven days a week. And, you know, I'm already hearing from my regular customers, you know, there, we have a lot of families where a family plays, they don't wanna walk down the sidewalk. They're, they're avoiding the area. And I, I'm talking to the other business owners, they're hearing the same thing. It's not just the traffic backup, it's all, all the construction that's happening, literally right in front of our business. All the parking spaces are taken up, Metro Cat Hospital's been affected, Fast Frame. People don't want to park on the other side of the square and bring their cat-
So, I'm trying to think of a way to stretch the hours so that they don't impact the businesses. And the question is, you know, they're starting at 10, but, you know, how many, how much are you open until, how late are you open?
Sure, sure, we're open until 10:30, so, you know, starting at 10 is an acceptable, certainly acceptable timeframe. We open at 11, so, that's, that's not, and I know the Cat Hospital opens a bit earlier than that, we Fast Frame opens earlier than that, so, you know, ideally, it would be wrapped up a little bit sooner so that it's not impacting any of the businesses there. And, you know, there's no overnight parking there to begin with, so it shouldn't affect, you know, the parking. The parking should become available, which is really necessary for us to operate our business, those, those parking spaces. There's no doubt. I know there's other business owners here that would like to speak on this impact too, so I'm gonna allow them.
Let me ask a question of NSTAR in terms of-
National Grid.
I'm sorry, National Grid. Sorry. This is a very, very bad situation and I appreciate you trying to work around it. What I, one thought I had was, are there slow days, maybe this is a question to you, are there slow days that the day work could be scheduled for to minimize the, the impact on, on businesses? I mean, for example, you know, a lot of businesses don't open, don't open on Monday or there's, you know, it's slow on Monday and Tuesday. I assume you're not gonna be doing day work on Friday and Saturday. But, are there, I mean, can you schedule it around the slow business days for at least some of the businesses?
So, we, we will work with businesses on communicating, you know, if one day is better than the other, but there will be a time where, when that connection is ready to be made, it's not as though we can just put that on hold. If we can, you know, move from one end of the street to the other end of the street, we, we've already, you know, shown that we're willing to do that stuff. But, right now, I couldn't promise you that we could do that, but we, we can definitely work with the businesses to say, hey, listen, we're gonna be in front of there tomorrow or Tuesday or Wednesday, just so you know. We, we can give notice on that and if something's going on, like, your concern was trash pickup or deliveries and stuff, so we've worked with that to make sure that they can get the trucks in there. And, you know, I, I spoke to the details when I was out there to say, hey, this is really important that we make sure we get the delivery trucks in here and the trash picked up and stuff like that. And we've ordered some more signs to say the businesses are open. So, we're, we're working to communicate that stuff. So, to answer your question, we can try, but we always can't do that. But, we definitely will try to, you know, if somebody's closed on a Monday and we have an opportunity to dig a hole in front of their store on that Monday, then we're, we're gonna go for it, absolutely. But, we can't always do that, no.
Anyway, sure. Shulon.
I don't know whether you all got this, but-
Yeah, we have a-
Oh.
Fireplace.
This, this, this isn't the first time that we've had construction.
Why don't you identify yourself for the record?
Okay. My name is Shulon Chine. I used to own Fast Frame in Washington Square. I sort of represent the Washington Square Association.
Sort of.
And I'm a resident of Washington Square also and my, my boys are also, their families are also residents of Washington Square. So, we're, we're stuck there and, and we love the square. And today with me are the representatives of fellow businesses in the square. Peter, who is, owns Fast Frame now, The Public House, Connolly's Hardware, Gersonas, and Asens Bakery, and, I missed someone.
Roy? Small bite?
Oh, leite, of course. Really good salads and soup. So, some of the businesses have been there for decades, of course, and Fast Frame has been there for 16, 16 years. And so, we've survived probably about three big constructions. The biggest was the Beacon Street project. And some businesses, the fact is, they didn't survive. And the letter you have there is from Jim Solomon, who wanted to be here tonight, but he's with the Clintons, so, we couldn't compete. But, his, he, he, I know that period where he was actually thinking of closing because he lost in three or four months approximately a quarter million dollars of business. And, and that really, really hurt. So, I really understand. I mean, Stoke Pizza employs 40 people, you know? So, this is not just a question of Toram, it's a question of he and his employees. Fast Frame, same thing, it's at the corner, Metro Cat Hospital also. And I, I think you all understand how serious this can be because it really becomes a question of, am I gonna be able to pay the rent this month? It's not a question of how much am I gonna, am I gonna take home anymore? It's really trying to cover the costs. And very often, as a, as a business owner, you know, when I was in the square, what I found unpleasant was sometimes there was this very contentious, you know, sort of feeling between the people that are working on the construction project and then us. And I, I do remember several times, well, quite a few number of times, because I complained so much to DPW also, that when I would walk with my dog to my store at 10:00 in the morning or 9:00 in the morning, the people working there would just sort of roll their eyes and say, oh, here she comes again, you know? So, I hope that somehow, you know, we can find a way so that, you know, it's not a question of losing 50% of business or 40% of business. I mean, if it's 10% of business and we know, you know, a few days before and we can find some kind of a contingency plan or prepare, and, and if there's a feeling that we can communicate and we're heard and not sort of, you know, giving lip service, then I think it'll get easier because if we both wanna cooperate. The feeling now is that it's just butting heads, you know? And, and that we have just no solution. And, and, and basically, that leads to the fact that, you know, we're just taking in less income every day and which, you know, puts in danger really our contracts with our employees and, and makes it untenable. And we certainly don't want, you know, Washington Square, over the last few decades, really, really, has become a destination. I mean, people come from all over Boston area to the restaurants and bakeries, you know, and the services that, that are in Washington Square. So, over the last two years, I think we've seen all over in Brookline and Coolidge Corner also, that we have quite a few big vacancies. Washington Square had small vacancies. And finally, we just filled them up. You know, there's a new boutique going on a few doors down and the Imac and Bolio's ice cream place is, you know, under construction for a new business. So, it's nice to see the fact that, you know, we're coming back to 100% commercial occupancy. So, we don't want at, at this time, you know, seven months of work, which means basically for the only area in this town where we can do alfresco dining, we won't be able to do alfresco dining. That's a huge amount of revenue for, that, that the restaurants are counting on because a lot of the restaurant, residents go off on vacation. So, that alfresco dining and the fact that it brings a lot of people from outside of Brookline into Washington Square really helps the businesses sustain itself.
Question. So, you're in a unique position because you're both a resident and a former business owner. The reason, from what I gather, we have daytime work as a default is to prevent angry mobs who don't like night work. So, do you think the other residents will be understanding that this is so detrimental to the businesses in the area, that that is why we're shifting it to the night? Since you're a longtime resident, are you willing to kind of suffer the consequences of us shifting the work?
Well, I think it's a, it's a question of really communicating as well as we can with the residents also. And many of the residents that live in that area are our clients and customers. You know, they support our businesses and we support what they've, they're passionate about. I mean, many of the businesses in Washington Square are- I mean, many of the businesses in Washington Square are great community citizens by supporting many of the causes that are dear to the hearts of many of residents. I mean, we donate to childcare center fundraisers, you know, the high school, the Driscoll School. So, I think there is mutual support. So, you know, if we start jackhammering at two o'clock in the morning, I mean, if I were living opposite, I'd be totally surprised, especially if I had a family and I had young children, you know, that needed their sleep. I, I would be upset. But I think it's important, once again, just as, you know, we get more information from National Grid about how this construction is going to take place and last, you know, seven months. I mean, it was a surprise for us to find out that it was gonna be seven months. If it was two weeks, it was okay. But I think it would be good for us to call a neighborhood meeting, or at least write a letter, put it into all the mailboxes, informing people that this work, first of all, has to happen, because I believe it's a security issue, right?
Safety.
Safety issue, safety issue.
And we saw what happened in...
Right. So, so we, I mean, resident and businesses, we all want to be, you know, work and live in a safe area. But I'm, I'm hoping that the number of people that will be affected by that would be much less. Usually, when I get to sleep, I have a hard time getting to sleep, but once I'm asleep, I'm asleep, right? So, ten o'clock at night, I'm hoping that a lot of people would be just asleep, and the kids will be fast asleep.
Oh, wishful thinking.
Except for maybe Ben Franco, who likes to read.
Exactly.
So, so, but, uh, you know, I, I, I just don't see how we can, the businesses can sustain seven months of loss of revenue. I think that's just impossible.
Let me just ask, are there any residents who, here, would you care to speak on this? Tell us how you feel.
I'm prepared, because I'm so...
Don't be, don't be shy. We love to hear from you.
I live on Washington Street.
But wait till you get over there, so our vast TV audience can see you.
My name is Kathleen Conley Kenny. I own Conley Hardware. My, my family were, since nineteen fifty-one. I wasn't prepared to be here this evening, but my son was, and his daughter got sick, so he was not able to be here. So, I think he was planning to make a statement, but, but I live at six eighty-six Washington Street, which is almost next door to the hardware store. And several years ago, when the Beacon Street project was going on, that was going on during the day and the night, the, the traffic lights malfunctioned at the intersection of Beacon and Washington. So, at three o'clock in the morning, there's, there was a, a traffic jam all the way down Wash, Washington, almost to Brookline Village. And people were leaning on their horns, and, so that was, that was, you know, one light, one car could get through the change of lights during that project. It was a nightmare. Called the police several times. They finally, they had a detail out there directing traffic. But, you know, we've been through a number of projects, and it always seems to be, like in September, when the students are coming back, you know, there's a lack of parking. I just think seven months of this project is, is, is a very difficult thing for any small business to sustain. And I really hope that you have the compassion to understand that we love Brookline, and we love doing business in Brookline. My father grew up in Brookline, and I have been a resident for the last sixteen years, so I hope you consider that we're people trying to serve a community. We're trying to be helpful. I'm proud of my business and the employees that I have, many of whom have been with me for over thirty years. So, I appreciate your consideration.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name's David. Ailish and I have owned The Public House for almost seventeen years now, which is kind of hard for me to hear say, to say that, that's just unbelievable. What Kathy didn't say, and I think her husband, I'm sorry, her, I'm sorry, her son, who was about six foot eight, would kill me tomorrow with his fist if I didn't point out, is, do you guys all know where Connolly Hardware is? They're not directly affected by what's going on in front of Stoked. But the traffic situation is such that all, if I told you how much money they generate in paint sales alone a year, they're all going to even circle to the hardware store. They're losing business, too, and that's something she didn't point out. Sorry, Kathy. We're all close, so I don't mind saying that for her son, who's, who's a close friend of ours, and they're losing business, too. The second thing I wanna say is watching my friend Toram's business go down in flames is, and with no pun intended, of course, it's a wood fire place, but it, it's not funny. It's, it's, it's killing them, and their outdoor business is basically done for, for the season. And that's something that I can tell you, we count on for that extra income every year, because our rents in Washington Square, I'm sure you might know, you might not know, are just exorbitant. And before we pay anything else, our rents are ridiculous. I pay over seventeen thousand dollars a month before I pay anything else, before Ailish and I pay anyone else, vendors. The pet, the pest control, I mean, it, it doesn't, it just goes on and on and on and on. We just don't have that extra income. Probably, I don't know, fourteen years ago, there was a gas leak in front of Public House. We were closed for almost two weeks. It took us almost three years to literally make up that money. And our bookkeeper, thank God she's as good as she is, got us through that period. And that was two weeks. He's looking at, he's looking at seven months of serious lost business. And now come to us. We, now let me, I'm sorry, I should've said at first, because I've spoken with you, and I really appreciate your concern, your genuine concern for the businesses. What we've heard tonight, I think we're all impressed with that. We really do, and I, the fact that you're fighting for us tonight, we really appreciate it. But I am here. Stoked is here.
Right.
Sorry, so, yeah, this is the, this is the driveway up to my parking lot. And almost seventeen years ago, my Ailish and I stood before you, one of the prerequisites of granting of the license was no deliveries on Beacon Street. You did not want trucks parked, double parked on Beacon Street, and we agreed to that. So, luckily, we had the back parking lot, and we agreed to that. They can't get up there. Last, they can't get up here because the way the police have the cones set up, and I'm sure it's necessary, but they can't get up that driveway. So, last Friday, I didn't get a meat delivery. I'm the public house. We sell meat. And it, I mean, it cost us probably five grand in revenue, because I couldn't get a meat delivery, because I can't take orders in the front door. And that's something that we agreed with you guys along, I don't, I'm not sure if any of you, it was so long ago. I don't think Nancy, you were there.
No, definitely not.
It was Kenny Goldstein, and, yeah, of course, and we have agreed to that, and, and we've had to, I will admit, if I'm being honest, we've had to take some deliveries through the front door. And I've always told anyone that delivers to us, if they park in front, if it's a new driver, you've gotta go around back, you gotta do a U-turn. They can't get through. Those trucks are big. And we take in a lot of food, almost six days a week, probably six days a week, and I'm not getting deliveries.
Can we, can we give Grant some kind of relief there? Temporary relief from that?
Yeah, I don't know what the conditions were. I'd have to look.
It's, it's, seems to me, it's unreasonable to...
To me, it wasn't, because we were, we were fortunate enough to have that back parking lot.
Well, no, 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 it's unreasonable if, if, if the parking lot, if the driveway is blocked, that you can't get a delivery.
It's not blocked. I can personally pull my car up and deliver every day.
Yeah, well, but the truck has to get in. It's blocked.
Exactly.
If you need a temporary relief, I encourage you to come to see us, but...
Sure.
In the end of what we're talking about.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, we, we wanna work with you, too, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's tough to, on a Friday night, tell people we don't have burgers.
Right, yeah.
That's lost revenue.
It's an angry mob.
Well, seriously, well, yeah. But I, I'm here to speak more, it, it's not affecting me as much as it's affecting Connolly Hardware. Because of the traffic problem, they're going to the other hardware store. And Stoked, that goes, it goes beyond saying what devastation this is causing them. Financial devastation. If this doesn't change, I'm gonna have to watch my friendly business, and that's not something I wanna see. If I forgot something, guys, I apologize, but it's devastating to these businesses. And when I can't get a delivery, and I have to tell people we don't have this, that, and the other thing, and figuring an argument with the police because the truck's knocking over cones, I mean, it, it's just, I think they touched on the really important stuff, but I'm just trying to give you guys an idea of what confusion and, like, awfulness. It's, it's really bad, really, really bad.
Okay, I think, we, we're convinced.
Okay.
Okay.
No, and I'm glad that they're supporting us.
Right.
That's cool. I didn't wanna come here tonight in fight with National Grid, so it's refreshing to me to see that they're on our side as well.
Right, okay.
Thank you, David.
So...
Did he wanna speak?
Yeah, come on up. Just, don't grab defeat from victory.
Good evening. Ari Sathana-Soplos from Athens Bakery. I'm here to voice my support for the whole night thing, and I would go a little further than that. It's not just night. For me, I need to demonstrate something. You see this gray area, right? Imagine this length of this room, two times, maybe the most, right? Seven months to open up a trench, change pipes, and couple of, one or two regulators, right? And those regulators are supposed to maintain pressure, I would assume, right? And it's for everybody's interest to change it as soon as possible. And the sooner the better for everybody, for us, for the residents, because I hear, I think here we are, us against the people trying to sleep at night. And it's not the issue. The issue, everybody's safety and our survival. So, please do your best to accommodate us. Thank you.
Um, so, any concerns about, yeah?
If I could add one more thing. Again, we, we can do six nights a week, you know, and we could try six nights a week, but we definitely need the five nights. But, and I know everybody usually needs a break and stuff, and that's why I, I definitely would recommend the five, but if, if, if you guys wanted to go six, to try to move it along faster, we're also open to do that as well. So, I, I, again, I'll leave that to your discretion. Six would take time off of it. Five will definitely improve it during the days.
Well, I'm, what, why don't I suggest we grant six, but let's be sensitive, if, if, if there are lots of complaints, cut back to five.
Yeah, so right now, I would say the six would be Monday through Saturday, and then...
Saturday at ten PM, does that, does that give you any...
Well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say Sunday, right? Sunday at ten PM?
Oh, so...
Sunday at...
So, it would be Saturday, Saturday night into Sunday off?
Correct.
Okay. So, the, so this would be Friday night into Saturday?
Well...
Ten PM and ending at ten AM.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would support the six, just because, you know, it's gonna get the pain over with quicker.
Right, yes.
And it's, it is a safety issue. And also, you'll be working over the summer, and hopefully in better weather than you might have in the fall, so...
We hope so.
I, I would think that it would be in these folks' interest to get it over with. They know it has to be done, but let's just do it as fast as possible.
And again, we would appreciate it, and I know they would appreciate it. Again, I, I'm sure I will get phone calls and emails from a few residents, and I'm prepared for that. And I think everybody by now probably has my name and cellphone in this town, so, again, I can definitely take any concerns that anybody has.
Okay, so why don't, I don't see language for a vote here. So, why don't we, so I'll move that we grant a noise bylaw waiver for six nights, work on six nights, and it would go from Sunday to...
Saturday morning.
Saturday morning. Ten AM, ten PM to ten AM.
Correct.
All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco.
Aye.
Select person Heller.
Aye.
Select person Green.
Aye.
Select person Hamilton.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Yeah, the best we could probably do, we'll, we'll do it as soon as possible, but realistically, we talked about one week. We would need to make the adjustment to move into it.
So, it's day work for another week? Come up to the, to our vast...
Yes, thank you for your time, David, and thank you for your visit on there. Yeah, let me go talk my cool first, see where we are, but I would like to start as soon as possible with the, under the condition right now, because some, we have to move some cool route to make this adjustment. So, hopefully, let's, let the aim at this, this Sunday evening, Sunday night?
Sunday night at ten.
So, see that if that works, otherwise we can...
Well, if you can start earlier, the, the, the waiver is good, yeah.
Okay, good now, so we, maybe we let the couple of days we discuss. Thank you.
Put you in charge.
Okay.
So, thank you, board, I appreciate it. One, one last comment, I must say, Mr. Chair, how ironic it's that I'm here tonight, or last night.
Did you get some cake?
I, I, no, no. But again, thank you all very much, and...
Thank, thank you for your willingness to work with the community.
Absolutely. And let me tell you, these, these business owners have been nothing but more cooperative with me than anybody else.
It's been very inspiring.
Yeah, it is good. It's good to be able to work with people. And that's the goal, to be able to work with the community and to work with the business owners. And I look forward to keep, keeping it up. Thank you.
Okay.
You do wanna work with us?
Yeah, yeah, work with them.
And I think I told you, you know, my title is Community and Customer Manager. I work for National Grid, but people don't realize I'm here for the community, and they have to come to me and tell me when something's going on, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and good luck, and don't be shy about telling the select board office if things are going awry.
I know where I'm going on my next date night.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Congratulations.
Thank you. Bye. We're going to do a little reshuffling. Melissa downstairs is tied up, and Ryan Obrega is tied up downstairs at the advisory committee. So, let's, let's talk about Newberry College. Right now, the, the first round of bids occurred last week. There's a second round of bids due tomorrow, and then a final round potentially next Wednesday, May eighth. So, there is, at this point, nothing to report yet. point, nothing to report yet. The town has submitted the bid, and we've received feedback, and the acquisition advisory committee is meeting tomorrow to discuss the feedback and determine a bid strategy going forward. So...
As is this board.
As is this board tomorrow morning. So, there's a noon tomorrow deadline. So, we've got our work cut out for ourselves, and we'll see how it goes. And that's pretty much all I can say about it. But this is a public hearing on the Newberry College Acquisition Warrant article. I don't know, you know, this board is committed to participating in that process. The one thing I'll say is, I certainly, in my remaining time, and I suspect the rest of you folks, my colleagues, are not approaching this with a blank check. We have to be very cognizant of the financial position of the town, and we have to be confident that whatever finance strategy we come up with, that we can actually afford it, and we're not putting our AAA bond rating in jeopardy. That's certainly been my approach to this thing, and I hope it will be the board's continuing approach as we go forward. And there's no guarantee we're going to get it. We do know that we are, in fact, competing against a lot of bidders. It's, there's a lot of interest. So, we'll see how it goes. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this warrant article? I see none. Any members of the board wish to...yeah?
Well, I think that, you know, we need to pursue the path and vote this article so that we can present it to town meeting. I have no idea, you know, even though I sit on that committee and been very, been involved in the negotiations, it's hard to know what's gonna happen, because there's always moving parts. So, what, but I do think it's important for us to put this warrant article, you know, make a recommendation to town meeting to act, to vote favorable action on this warrant article. So...
Wow, but we're not ready to, we're not ready to put forward a motion.
Well, but we're ready to, I think, no, not a specific motion in terms of money. We don't know, but I think that this is, you know...
Yeah, procedurally, yeah, procedurally, we're not ready to...
I understand that, but I'm just saying that we need to make sure that everyone understands that we intend to pursue this.
Right, and our, what I would suggest we do is an interim report in the combined reports, pretty much summarizing what I just said. And that, and then in the supplemental, if we're ready, at that point, a supplemental mailing. At that point, we would propose a motion. And I don't know what the timing of this thing is gonna be. We may even need to adjourn town meeting and push it, push that into June if necessary.
I would say that, you know, I hate for staff to spend a lot of time writing something that's not gonna be, you know, writing an interim report. I think it could be two lines.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What I said can be summarized probably in four sentences.
Yeah. Come on.
I didn't say a lot.
You implied a lot, Neil.
Right. Select person Hamilton.
I will just say, it's been a little aggravating to be on the board for the Newberry discussion because it seems like a lot of people are in favor of its acquisition. But I almost feel like I don't know how seriously to weigh this support, because everybody has their own view on, one, how much it will cost, and, two, how we're going to pay for it, and then, three, what it will be used for. And the devil is always in the details. So, I just want everybody to keep in mind that it is not this magic panacea for everything that people wish Brookline had. So, trying to formulate a bid based on reasonable assumptions on what we'll be able to do with the property once acquired, and within the constraints of our own town processes, it can get frustrating at times that it doesn't always appear like a transparent process, and it takes forever. But it's been very interesting to see how this whole thing unfolds. It's been a learning experience for me. I'm sure I'm not alone in that. But I just hope that everybody takes a breath, and if we don't end up doing what people want with the parcel, you know, their idea for what it should be used, I hope that you are still supportive of whatever gets decided, if we are so fortunate to win the bid.
Yes, I agree with a lot of what you've said. I think that Neil is correct. We need to keep in mind what the financial parameters are. You know, we can't just, we don't have an open checkbook here. And we are stewards of the town's finances, and we have to keep in mind what we really think we can handle in bonding capacity. You know, we've talked, Neil said publicly, that we could transfer, if we use the academic building for beeps and office space, we'll be able, that it'll really finance itself because of the, almost...
Potentially, partially.
Yeah, okay. But at least it would, it would help a lot to have, you know, we're paying that money over here in rent, and now we're paying it over here towards the payment on the bonds. And so, that doesn't increase our, any liability, our payments at all in terms of our, in terms of our overall budget. It doesn't increase, and it doesn't decrease it, you know, it keeps it the same. So, that's, I think, an important thing to keep in mind. And, you know, I think the financial picture is, it is critical.
So, I agree with nearly everything that's been said in the last seven minutes. Perhaps this is an appropriate time to just remind everybody that it's very likely that we'll be involved in a planning conversation regardless of whether the town or some other entity ends up acquiring Newberry College, given the restrictive zoning that's in place right now. So, if you think of this as sort of a two-phase conversation, there's the bidding on who's gonna acquire the property, and the second phase is the planning conversation. It's very likely that the planning conversation is gonna have to take place regardless.
Good point.
Right. And the other thing to think about is, in terms of a financing strategy, you know, if we're doing it in the, in the very short run without an operating override, whatever, whatever we, whatever the bid is, you know, we're going to have to borrow the money, and we're going to have to pay for it somehow. And what we've been looking at is short-term financing, interest only for a couple of years while, two to three years while a, while a planning process takes place. If we're doing that, we're starting out with that financing in the CIP that hadn't been planned for, and something's gonna have to give. So, if we have a new million or multimillion dollar interest payment, that means something that's in the CIP isn't gonna happen, potentially. So, that's something...
And almost all that new growth that you've promoted, Neil.
Yeah, well, we have to see the new growth before we can spend it. And the new growth that we're generating now takes a few years for it to hit the books. And then we have to make sure that it's sustainable before we start putting it into the budget. So, there's a lot of ifs, ands, and things that we really need to think about, yeah?
And we also should remember that we're gonna have a big job of educating the community and controlling expectations.
Right.
And that is not gonna be a small matter. Come on up, join the party, Ms. Fraley.
Hi, Regina Fraley, Precinct 16. The hearing device stopped working, so I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Apologize in advance if you've already spoken to this. Some of you might be aware, at least one of you, that 15, 14, no, make that 17 years ago, Newberry was on the list of the comprehensive plan to keep an eye on it. A year ago February, it was back on a list on the major parcel study. That all of you should have been aware of because it was during your tenure. What did you have in mind? If we're suddenly concerned about paying for it, what did you have in mind? And that's a real question. What was it on the major parcel study for? What did you plan to conceive of what to do with it?
The major parcel study, all it did was identify the major parcels in town and indicate what could be done with them by right. It made no, made no recommendations as to what we would do with it should it become available.
Or how to finance it.
Or how to finance it. It was, all it did was identify the parcels. So, you know, it actually was quite useful. When Newberry did come on the market, the major parcel study, in conjunction with the strategic asset plan, helped us think about Newberry and the possibilities. But then, you know, it identified a lot of parcels, but it doesn't necessarily, you know, it helped us think about it, but it, there was no, it wasn't the goal of the major parcel study to make any kind of recommendations about buying a parcel.
You must have had some idea about what we might use it for, otherwise why waste your time? And you don't need a consultant to tell you what the parcels are in town. There are a handful of them, and we've been looking at them for 15 or more years, so...
So, I don't have the major parcel study in front of me, obviously, but my recollection is there were two, two labels attached to the Newberry campus. One was residential, which is an as-of-right use, and second was institutional use, which is how it's functioning today. There was institutional use.
Which is what, though?
It's how it's being used today. It's a...
As an education.
As an educational institution owns it and operates it. Beyond that, there was no contemplation of locating any municipal facility or municipal use there, nor using it for commercial development or commercial growth.
So, but you must have said, why bother to do it? How are we gonna pay for it?
You must have had those conversations.
No, no, no.
Should have had those conversations. If you didn't...
The major parcel study, in effect, is, it's a reference for us. It's the equivalent of a reference book. And it tells us the characteristics of the major parcels and what can be done and what our risks are should a private entity buy it. So, it identified a number of large parcels and said, hey, if this institution goes out of business or this large landowner sells it, you can put, you know, 15 homes here, or, you know, cluster housing, or whatever the zoning was.
Which is a useful exercise for municipal services.
Right. So, but, you know, it did identify potentially multiple town uses, including fields and admin space. Fields and admin space. And so, you know, that, it's a reference. So then, now that it's available, we have to figure out, one, if it can be used for fields and admin space or even classrooms, how do we finance it? And how do we compete? You know, that's something we have to figure out now. And that's what this acquisition committee is doing.
Thank you.
So, there is no recommendation right now.
Can we go home?
We have more things we need to...okay, so Melissa isn't ready for Article 9, so we can move on to Article 17.
So this is the naming commission change proposed by town meeting member Neil Gordon. My recollection is that the major change here was that we were gonna add a representative from the Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, and expand the size of the group accordingly from five to seven members. I'm strongly in support of this. I think that the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations is an important voice to have in this conversation. And I think, I'm very comfortable voting this tonight with a recommendation of favorable action.
So am I.
Yeah, so am I, even though I think, you know, to some degree, it's symbolic, but it's important symbolism.
Yeah, I think the reason, didn't we vote this?
I thought we voted favorable. I have in my notes, we voted favorable action on 3/26/19, but it may be that there's...
Yeah, no, no, I think what happened, and what I don't see here, I understand, I thought the advisory committee voted to refer it to CTONS, Committee of Town Organization and Structure. So the question is, do we want to agree with the advisory committee?
I don't see the necessity of that.
To me, this is straightforward. You either agree with it or you don't, and there's nothing to study.
I would agree. I think we should just move ahead and...
So, on that basis, my recommend, my motion would be, no motion, that we not reconsider this.
Do we have to vote on that?
No. Well, okay, we can vote on it. So, the motion is for reconsideration, and if you don't want to reconsider, vote no. I'm voting no. I'll signal in advance. All those in favor of a motion to reconsider Article 17, please say aye. If not, say no. Select person Franco.
No.
Select person Heller.
No.
Select person Green.
No.
Select person Hamilton.
No.
And the chair votes no. Okay, that was easy. The leash law, it's my understanding, is this...
So, the leash law...
Thank you.
Hello.
So, the advisory committee did not accept the modifications that were proposed by the Commission on Disability, CID, the Diversity, Community Relations. Excuse me, trying to catch my breath here. So, the question is whether or not you want to line up with the advisory committee or stay with your existing language. stay with your existing language.
Um, my recollection was the-
So the language change was proposed acknowledging that it is redundant because all bylaws need to comply with these requirements, but they wanted the language in there to emphasize this.
So is this worth a floor fight? I think the language is innocuous.
Exactly, and I think that the question is not whether we, you know, a floor fight is always unpleasant, but I think we need to be on the side of what's right, and I think it is important that this be acknowledged. And I think we should go for it.
Again, symbolic, but important symbolism.
Okay.
So that means that your current vote, you don't need to reconsider anything, that's your position currently, so.
Okay, so, hold on. Let's have an official vote for reconsideration, and if you're against reconsideration, you vote no. So all those in favor of reconsideration, please say aye. Select person Franco.
No.
Select person Heller.
No.
Select person Green.
No.
Select person Hamilton.
No.
And the chair votes no. Okay, what are you here for?
I was pointing 70 on this.
Oh, we held that. We deferred it. Until when?
Next week.
Two weeks. 14.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, Josh, for asking so late.
Um, okay, Article 9.
Okay, sure. So just downstairs with the advisory committee debating for a very long time, Article 9.
So what were the, what were the issues?
We talked about, for about an hour and a half, on $265,000 appropriation for Woodland Road.
And what was the conclusion?
So ultimately, the Transportation Board offered a compromise where they would do a portion of the project and not proceed with the second portion of the project until they've had a public meeting where it could be a little bit more fully vetted. So that's essentially, the appropriation would stand at the 265 for Woodland Road, and they, they'll have a meeting prior to town meeting, so people will be able to tell whether or not there's been progress.
So the, so advisory voted the appropriation, and then the Transportation Board agreed to have a process, but that's not gonna be in the-
It won't be in the motion. I think that-
That's fine.
There was an attempt to hold the funds until November town meeting, but ultimately the compromise with the Transportation Board won out.
Okay.
So-
So there's a lot more to Article 9.
Yes.
That's just one of the open pieces.
So you've spent, you know, since February 14th or so, you've had all departmental budgets come before you for review. You had building department as the last departmental budget this evening. So I have proposed budget tables and budget vote with the conditions of appropriation at your places. I think you had revised conditions of appropriations. I had some edits from Town Council, Bond Council, just some of the bond references.
Is there any, any changes of substance?
No. So the only, so let's kind of just walk through the presentation, and it'll give you kind of where we are.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you've got $295 million of general appropriations. Things that have changed since the financial plan came out, we had better experience with our GIC rates, 204,000 less than what we had in the budget. So that is split based on the enrollment in the plans. So the town savings in that regard is 85,735. You received a letter from the town administrator with recommendations for allocation for the town. I can say that the advisory committee has supported each of these changes. So if you are in agreement, we'll be in line with the advisory committee. So we are allocating some staffing for the Park Ranger Program. Erin had a proposal that we weren't able to fund, so we're able to do some partial implementation there. A piece of the funding will be supporting a full-time position, and then a piece of that funding would also be going into the group health budget to support benefits associated with that position. The advisory committee had recommended previously funding for a custodial support for the Council on Aging, 15,750. They also, so they also, that was a vote they took prior to knowing where the funding was coming from. So now we've identified a funding source so that they don't need to sort that out. And then we have a recommendation for the balance after funding those first two proposals to help support any runoff that we need for Newberry College planning purposes. So we had a reserve fund transfer in fiscal 19 to support the work of the committee in preparing a bid. That money is good through June 30th, when the fiscal year ends, that money goes away. So we're thinking that there might be some ancillary costs that are still needed in the new fiscal year. So 32,401 is the recommendation there. We talked with the advisory committee about, you know, if we are not successful with Newberry, what would we want to do with that funding? And, you know, I said that's something we could revisit in November, but we also have always had a need for consulting and planning services around various committees that we have, so it's not a bad place to put the money.
So this is just, this is going into the-
Professional technical-
The professional service, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, we can always use some help there.
Yes. So the school department increase was 118,520, and so that will go right into their budget. We made some debt service adjustments, so you had a memo from me that I think would be either in your binder on the debt service adjustments. We talked about that when we reviewed the debt and interest budget. Essentially, now that we have our experience going out for the bonds, right sizing the budget, and there's a corresponding decrease in revenue for the debt exclusion projects, so there's no impact on the budget. Street repair, we have an additional $228,000 from an existing CIP project that can be closed out. We identified that through Article 6, where we review all existing appropriations and determine whether or not any of them can be closed. So we do have an account that we can reallocate to street repair. During the advisory committee process as well, we also added, we were able to identify $50,000 in the Recreation Revolving Fund that could fund a project in the special appropriation list. They voted that tonight, so that's the only thing not reflected on your table, is that we are taking 50,000 from the Rec. Revolving Fund. We are using that to fund the bathrooms at the Elliott Center. That frees up $50,000 that then we can put, and that will be also added to street repair as well.
I don't see the tables.
So those were set to be a packet over the weekend, so that should be part of your original packet.
Okay, got it, okay. Sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, here it is. Okay, okay.
So, it's a good segue, Neil, the budget tables are provided. Full advisory vote is tonight, they're still wrapping that up, but all of the components are there, if you will. I don't believe that we're not aligned in all the recommendations that we have. I don't believe they're moving the two school projects until after the override vote so that they know the outcome. Your choice as to whether or not you want to wait, or if you're ready to move those as well.
My inclination would be to move it to, and then if the override doesn't pass, we rescind.
Yeah. Because we're assuming it will pass.
So just a quick review of the CIP as well, because that is part of the overall financial plan. You have your conditions of appropriation, which essentially lists all of your special appropriations, which is your CIP. You have a $296 million six-year plan. Baldwin and Driscoll Schools, at the time that the budget came out, the budgets weren't set for those projects, so they weren't, you know, listed in, they were TBDs in the CIP. Now we know that Driscoll is $108 million project, and that Baldwin is an $82.9 million project, combined with the previously authorized $4.7 million for Oak Street. In addition, we have $2 million for feasibility for the Pierce School that we're anticipating partnership with the MSBA. So these are some of the other projects that are in the CIP. You spoke with the Police Department about the radio infrastructure project. You spoke with Erin about Skyline Park and Lars Anderson, classroom capacity. We all know that that primarily funds the leases for the temples, for the early education program. And we have some fire renovations that are currently being studied and potentially will be resubmitted next year through the next year's CIP process as well. So these are some of the regular investment that we have within the CIP, our street and sidewalk rehab program. Advisory committee is still expressing that they feel that this account is underfunded and, you know, would like to see some additional resources added there. We have a regular program for roofs and masonry. We have some regular water and sewer infrastructure projects coming into the CIP, our energy conservation and tree replacement programs as well. So this is just a reminder of how the funding for the CIP works. So we take 6% of prior year net revenue, and that is dedicated to the CIP, and then we look for free cash to get us to a target of 7.5%. Within the 6% policy, we have 4.5% of debt financed and 1.5% of revenue financed. I spent a lot of time downstairs. Unfortunately, it was too quick, but we, with the advisory committee, talked a lot about the components of the debt policy, what the debt picture looks like within the levy and outside the levy, and then I also kind of gave them a snapshot of the Coolidge Corner School and how that debt service filtered, because that's a project that is financed both within the levy and with the debt exclusion. So that was kind of a good example for them to look at as well. So for revenue financed, $8.1 million, 3.1 of that is tax financed, and 6 million of that is coming from free cash. We've been very fortunate to have high certification of free cash. That has been intentional. We've been very conservative on our revenue estimates specifically around building permits, knowing that it's, a lot of that activity is, you know, not gonna be recurring and not something you want to build into a budget and then have to cut years out. So it's feeding the CIP instead of feeding the operating budget.
When do we start seeing some of the new marijuana money?
They asked that question last night, too. So we get that paid quarterly, and so I think we will be lucky if we get our first payment at the end of the fiscal year in terms of the sales tax piece. We did get a piece of our host community fee that they did pay, I think the host community agreement had-
It was like 100-
$100,000 within X amount of days, so that we have received that.
But it's a lot, it's, if I recall, it's kind of backloaded for the year.
So they had payments under the old host agreement, which was based on calendar year 2018 activity, and that also came in as well. So under the new agreement-
Yeah, if I recall, it's a big payment next March, if I recall.
Except for the host.
The community host agreement.
But that's used for offsetting expenses.
That's impact payments, yeah.
It has to be related to the industries.
Or can it be, well, it's impact, so it-
It's money we would spend anyway that we get-
So it seems to me it can be infrastructure in the area, so if it impacts the infrastructure, so sidewalks around in that area, and, you know.
So this is a new funding source, and with a lot of scrutiny on it, so I think we just need to be very careful as we approach kind of how we're gonna allocate these funds.
Well, it certainly can be used for education programs around addiction.
Mm-hmm. We have a whole host of requests from the Health Department.
And Health Department-
Health Department issues, I would think.
Yep.
Health Department concerns, studies about marijuana and other addictive, potentially addictive substances.
Right.
So this slide is just a reminder of free cash certification that we just talked about, and the recommendation following our fiscal policies, the waterfall, if you will. So a piece of it going to the operating budget, a piece of it going to preserve the town's position with fund balance. Liability fund has a target of 1% prior year net revenue, the CIP to get to that 7.5%, and then after those requirements are met, then there's, if there's still additional funds, there are additional recommendations, which are, we've discussed during the financial plan presentation, as well as the preliminary forecast as well. And those haven't changed from those two presentations either. So then debt service, so this is the $20.7 million of debt. Of that piece, 18.9% is general fund-related debt, and 1.8 million is enterprise debt. So within the levy, within the 6% policy, we have $13.1 million of general fund debt, and then debt exclusion specific is $5.8 million. So we have two rounds of borrowing around the Coolidge Corner School, we have some old high school, new high school, a piece of the Oak Street acquisition, and then 111 Cypress as well.
Yeah, the old high school, which is what, it's like a million?
951, yes.
Yeah, that's, next year is the last year.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so that helps a bit.
We're backfilling it with other debt schedules. So we talked about the street rehab and the Woodland Road, so you understand where they are with those recommendations as well. So, and then you have the tables.
But there's no conditional language on Woodland?
No, I was anticipating it when I built the presentation, and it's not there, so.
Okay, that's good.
And so I don't know if your omnibus vote, is everything wrapped up, or are they still discussing it?
I think we will skip mine. I'm sorry.
Okay. So you have the budget tables and conditions of appropriation that were presented to the advisory committee, the only change being the $50,000 adjustment that would need to be made.
Okay, so do we want to do a $300 million vote? Well, actually, it's 200 and-
93 or something.
280-
84.
284, 947, $167, is that my number? Well, we don't have to vote the number, we can vote the tables, as referenced in our
So I'm in favor of this vote, and as proposed, I'm just gonna say for my own benefit that I continue to be bothered by the fifth condition of appropriation. I think tonight is a good example of the fact that we frequently have department heads come to us and ask for positions that are really necessary and crucial to the town, and I have not been part of a conversation where we've turned one down. So I think that's something to focus on, maybe for next year's budget, to think about whether it's a good use of our department head's resources and our time to sit here and review positions that we almost always approve.
Yeah, I think this is, this is a leftover, this came into place, I think, in the 90s as a control on position creation. I would, for whatever it's worth, agree with my learned colleague.
Now I'm learned.
That these have become kind of routine and perfunctory, requiring the department head to appear before us, though there have been occasions where we've probed specific things in whether or not diversity is being sought, but there are other ways to do that.
And that's why I think it's appropriate not to touch the conditions of appropriation this year, but open a continued dialogue about those other strategies and how we can ensure that we're getting answers to questions we might have.
And I would just add also that the budget motion typically is the advisory committee motion, so to the extent that you're not in alignment, I think that's, you know, a conversation to be had, but if it needs to change, it's definitely something that should be kind of part of the-
Absolutely.
Yeah, my suggestion, perhaps, for what it's worth, being that I'm not gonna be here, so I'll just blurt it out, is next year when, next year when we do the warrant, kind of propose that this section right up front be excised. of propose that this section right up front be excised. Are the conditions in the initial warrant?
So the warrant has a paragraph that essentially captures all the-
Okay, so when, when you propose the conditions to, initially to advisory, you know, propose, propose the vacant positions one with a red line.
With a straight through.
Yeah, so that they see it and then that can begin the conversation.
Mm-hmm.
So it's at the front of the process.
Yeah.
Because, you know, really, yeah, I would agree. They tend to take up time and for, and I think we have confidence in the town's position control at this point. Or do we?
I hope you do.
Yeah.
Of course, you know, there's a difference between replacing positions and adding new positions.
Right, so maybe that's the way to do it.
There should be some way, some way to at least identify.
Right, if it's an existing position, it's okay.
Also, but the condition is any position that's become vacant during the fiscal year.
Right.
So that, that seems to indicate that it's already a funded position that's been, somebody hired into-
So maybe we should change the focus to new positions.
Well, in the past, we've had hiring freezes where this has been helpful. So I'm just-
My intention wasn't to try and get down to the nitty gritty of what we should do. I just wanted to flag it as something that I think should be a topic of conversation for a future.
But you can even, you can set it up that there's an administrative approval by the town administrator's office and that would help. So that, they need to get your permission to do, to fill a vacancy. They just, it just doesn't have to come here.
Mm-hmm.
Take up your time and ours. Okay, well, so-
Not that I've derailed the meeting.
I will just tell you that, you know, the reason you see them on the calendar is because we have-
It's required.
So sometimes we don't necessarily bring those to your attention right away or ever. And you never know about it.
Well, you shouldn't tell us that.
I'm just trying to tell you that we would do that before it gets to you, but sometimes we don't bring positions to you.
Right.
Right.
But anything that you decide that you agree should get filled comes here.
Will be on your calendar.
But, so, so since you're controlling, you're exerting control over positions and, well, okay, okay, never mind.
Next year.
Next year, okay. I will move. The conditions of appropriation from the advisory committee language and then the budget Actually, does, does your, the 426 memo has everything?
Yep.
Okay.
426 memo except for the adjustment on the, with the revolving fund, the $50,000 being added to roadway.
Okay, that's the motion.
And I'll make sure Kate has it in the morning.
Right, okay. All those in favor of this, the biggest motion that we will vote all year, please say aye. Select person Franco? Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Why don't we, since we have the petitioner here, go on to Article 29? So has, has advisory-
Melissa, what happened? I should say you have the advisory committee subcommittee language in front of you and nothing else.
Okay.
Yes, so, so the language that you saw, was it two weeks ago? A week ago?
Yeah, something like that, whatever it was.
I think it was last week.
It was, it's all a blur.
Really, at this point, it's really all a blur. So that language, I think at that point I'd said to you it was approved by Sandy, but it was going to the subcommittee the next week. They looked at it, they made three very minor changes, one minor change in three different spots, which was they deleted out at the end of the second whereas clause, they deleted out just the part that says Brookline Protected Classes. And they, they didn't delete anything else, just the little comments with Brookline Protected Classes. In the second resolve clause, they also deleted out the part which said the Brookline Protected Classes there. And then there was a third place in the first resolve clause, they, it now says residents who belong to one or more underrepresented groups as opposed to one or more Brookline Protected Classes. So they deleted out Brookline Protected Classes in three places. And I was fine with that. And then we went tonight and they, and they changed the second, the full committee changed the second resolve clause. And I, and I did not like it and I did not vote for it. So I'm here telling you about a warrant article that I don't support now. So, but I'm going to read it to you and you can, I don't know what you're going to do with it, but you can give that. So the second one now reads, "Be it further resolved that town meeting urges inclusivity, inclusivity be an important aspect of deciding membership of committees to the extent possible." That's all it says, it doesn't talk about-
Order of speakers.
Order of speakers, advisory or moderator at all. And it basically deletes out anything about this focusing on the moderator, missing all committees anywhere, like ever.
So give that to me again?
So, "Be it resolved that town meeting urges," then they delete out the moderator to consider, so scratch that out, then keep inclusivity, then instead of as, it says be. So be an important aspect of deciding membership of, and then they scratch out advisory committees, scratch out moderators. So it says deciding membership of committees, comma, scratch out the and, to the extent possible. And then delete out everything after possible.
Sounds like they gutted it.
Yep, and I don't like that, so.
Explain what, what you see as, as the problem with that. I agree that it creates a problem, but what is your view?
So my view is that this is really a warrant article about town meeting for town meeting. And so this is really focused on the moderator, and not our current moderator, but the role of the moderator in these sorts of things. And it sort of ties to me a neat bow around all of the players who are in town meeting and contribute to what's happening in town meeting. And the discussion in the room, which I didn't have the opportunity to respond to, was that it felt like it was picking on our current moderator. And I didn't get the chance to respond to that in the whole committee. And I'm not sure they would have cared, frankly. I can't, I don't know, but I, you know, that was, but I feel that it should be in there from my perspective, because I do want, again, this to be about town meeting and the, and the business and practices of town meeting.
Which subcommittee heard it?
Personnel.
Personnel, yeah.
Okay. So the full committee hasn't taken it up?
No, so the full-
Oh, okay.
So the subcommittee, right, just took out the Brookline Protected Classes in three spots. And then the full committee then edited that one resolve clause.
Ah.
But that was like five minutes ago.
What was the vote?
20 to 4 to 1 with me being the one. I wasn't going to vote against my own warrant article either.
It put you in a pickle.
Yeah.
Let's be leaders, Neil.
Yeah.
What was their reasoning for taking out the protected classes?
That actually came from something that Bobby Mabel said in the first go-round of the full committee review, which was the irony of Brookline Protected Classes, I think it's really just the legal term in general, being the least protected classes. And so, and so while I don't particularly agree with that change, I understood why Bobby said it and why the committee wanted to reflect that. And so I was okay with making that removal, although I actually, I thought it made the second resolve a little bit more confusing. So, but, but in any case, it was okay.
The, the, the only piece to me of the second resolve clause that, as, as was, as you constructed it, that I have a little problem was is the order of speakers. You know, he sets, he generally, I was going to say, he has, it's kind of first come, first served, but yes, but not really.
Right. There's a whole not really part to it, right?
Yeah. But, you know, he, I, you know, I think he does a good job in managing the debate and mixing-
Different viewpoints.
-pros and cons and trying to get the debate, trying, not always succeeding, but trying to make sure that the debate isn't cut off before, you know, all viewpoints or most viewpoints are heard. You know, the debate kind of has a natural ebb and flow and he, he's tended to be pretty good at sensing when, when it's ebbed.
I would say three things to that. One is, it's not about Sandy. Like, we all need to, like, zoom out from, this isn't about Sandy.
But it's about Sandy.
It's not about Sandy.
Well, I mean-
In my perspective, well, I won't speculate on why it's not about Sandy.
Well, in the sense that this issue came up in connection with actions that Sandy took at last town meeting. Maybe that's sort of the background.
That's a little bit of it, but I wouldn't say, well, I don't think of Sandy as unique in that, in this sort of area, to his credit. It's not something that's just about Sandy. The second thing I would say is there's not only the speakers who have signed up, but there's calling on speakers from the floor and that allows a lot more flexibility as to speakers. And I also, the last point is, because I know that his hands are somewhat tied in some ways, it just says to the extent possible, recognizing that if this can't be addressed, it can't be addressed. And so it's just to think about it, to whatever extent speaker orders can be looked at in
So how does everyone feel?
By and large, I like the warrant article, that at least I saw the version last week. And it, it seems like it's mostly here this week. Still trying to wrap my head around the changes. That point, yeah, I, I get that it, it does feel like he tries to address who has signed up and who gets up to the mic first. But maybe that just gives him another reason to call on someone over someone, I don't know. The execution is difficult for that last, the last-
Yeah, so what's going to happen, he's called on a few men and there's men at the mic and then there's a woman three back in line. He's going to say to the woman, well, jump the line. That's, that's kind of tough.
And I don't mean to be, well, be careful saying this. Is this a problem? Has this been a problem at town meeting?
Has what been a problem?
Sandy not calling on, and we're talking about women.
Well, that was just an example. That was just an example.
Has that been a problem?
Has Neil's example been a problem? I guess I'm not really sure what I'm asking.
Has it been a problem that Sandy only calls on white men when there are opportunities to call on women, people of color, whatever?
I couldn't tell you, I don't want to get into some of the, I don't, actually don't want to go there, if that's okay with you. I don't feel comfortable talking about what's happened, how people have felt, how maybe they haven't felt, what they've talked about in public, what they haven't. And again, it's not about Sandy.
Yeah.
I would say that if we're thinking about a culture of inclusion, that knowing that this is an overt planned part and that people can be expected that their voices are very welcome to stand up, whether they're, and I'm reflecting on some of the data we saw from Jennifer Goldsmith's presentation earlier tonight, whether they have been in town meeting a couple of years or 20 years, that there is this idea that we're trying to reflect a diversity of perspectives and that's a good thing. Whatever holds them back from the mic, I don't want to, I don't want to say what it is, but we can try and reflect some of that and be welcoming to everyone who's coming to the mic and not feeling like it's just the old white men who are the 75% satisfied with town meeting who get to, who should feel comfortable with that.
So let me take a, I'm not going to answer your, I'm going to answer a different question than what you asked, because, you know, why should I be easy? I think it's widely regarded that there have been examples where people have been standing at the microphone, poised to ask a question, or on the speaker's list and debate has been terminated for any number of reasons. And that, that means, without getting into who's been at the microphones or who's on the speaker list, there are people that want to address town meeting that haven't been able to. And I think that's important context generally to think about.
I'm trying to figure out whether, you know, this focus is really the way to, the best way to address that issue. I mean, you know, for example, in that instance or that example, you're talking about people calling the motion when there are a bunch of people waiting in line to speak. And, you know, maybe the, we should focus on when people or why people call a motion, you know, when there's a lot of interest still, you know, being expressed by a line at the microphones.
But that's not controllable by anybody. It's, you know, 248 town meeting members deciding whether they want to terminate debate or not.
Well, it is controllable and it's controllable by Sandy, because he can either take the motion or not. And there's times that he does, he chooses not to take the motion and continue debate. So that's directly applicable.
He says, let's so and so, let's, you know, these three people-
Or I'm going to let more people, I'm going to let a couple more speakers go ahead. So he, this is exactly the point of that.
Okay, so this sort of encourages them to say, I know more speakers speak, because a lot of people, a lot of points of view that have not been expressed are waiting in line to speak. Okay, that's cool.
But I'm, I'm having a little trouble thinking about this in terms of an inclusion statement. Because I would like us all, Sandy included, to be colorblind and not to think about, well, do I need to let this minority speak or this, you know, I think in a society where we hope that people are treated relatively equally in the sense of, you know, inclusion in discussion, then, you know, why, the fact that you're making him or wanting anyone to, to, to focus on including a person who doesn't want to get up and speak and just happens to be a minority, why, you know, I don't know. I'm, I'm struggling with it because I think that, I would hope that we would have a moderator who doesn't worry about whether somebody is black or white or Asian or, you know, women. And I think, I'm not, I don't know, I'm not, do you understand what I'm saying? I, I like it to be-
I understand what you're saying. I think that there's a lot to unpack there, but I guess I'll start by saying that I've been doing a lot of reading about racial equity and a lot of other stuff. And I think that what I read a lot is that we want to be colorblind, but colorblind doesn't recognize where things, where our society actually is. And so when we say, and I, and when we use that kind of terminology, what we're really doing is erasing the fact that there are, and whether we say colorblind or gender neutral or, or, you know, any one of these things that erases difference actually erases part of someone's identity. And so I think that, I appreciate what you're saying, but I also think that this isn't about telling someone who doesn't want to speak that they have to come to the microphone to represent their, you know, particular sliver of the, of the population. It's really about making sure that if they feel like they have something that they want to add, that the, that the audience is receptive to hearing them.
Or encouraging- Or encouraging moderator to use whatever tools he has available to make sure that all voices are heard, so, I see that. I mean, it's an artificial, in certain sense, it's an artificial procedure, but, you know, maybe that's important or necessary.
And I also think that, for, going back to the example, you know, if we were, for example, I don't know, debating some national resolution about women's reproductive health, just trying to think about something that's related to women, and a whole bunch of men had spoken in a row, and then the call to question was for, and there was like five women at the microphone, or five women lined up to speak next door, and Sandy had, for whatever reason, lined up five men to speak first, that it might be very appropriate to say, hold on a second, let's hear from some women first, because of that issue. You know, because we need to, we don't just, we want to make sure that we are doing this in a thoughtful way as well, but there would be times where I could see something like that perhaps coming up. I don't know.
Right. Your example is the extreme one, in the same way that my example was the extreme one.
Well, and we do have a warrant article on menstrual products, so...
That's a perfect example, right.
Probably not got the political loadedness of, you know, other issues, but...
So...
That's the perfect test case, I guess, at town meeting, to see how this...
And there are a lot of men who think they have something to say about that.
That's true.
And that's an example where you want the moderator to step in and say, look, you know, we need to have some diversity of things. And not that men don't have anything to say about that, but, you know, if it's all, or even predominantly men, you're missing something.
That's exactly it, yeah.
I seriously doubt that would happen, but...
But again, it just, you know, given Neil's example there is a case where there's, let the punishment fit the crime, right? Let's match the two scenarios.
So, what do you guys want to do?
I would like to move the subcommittee's language.
Okay.
Okay, so that's taking out...
No, 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 that's...
Taking out protective class.
Taking out protective class.
Yeah.
And not taking out the...
That's what we have in front of us.
Right, the significant, the significant difference is the, "Be it further resolved that town meeting urges the moderator to consider inclusivity as an important aspect of deciding membership of the advisory committee, moderator's committees, and to the extent possible, the order of speakers at town meeting," excuse me, among other, excuse me, considerations.
Okay, so on page two, I assume I have the right one, Article 29, let's see, in our book, it takes out the word protective classes, but leads all the, leaves in all the...
You erase color, ethnicity, gender.
I guess that works.
No, I think it's this one that we're voting, isn't it?
Yeah, I think that's what we're voting.
No, I don't think so.
Do you want me to look really quickly and make sure you're looking at the right thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was in our book, that's what, it's in our book, right?
It's the same one I sent you last week, and mine is, let me see, right, oh no, you have it.
Yeah, that's the right one.
Yeah, this is the subcommittee report.
This is the subcommittee report.
Yeah, and that's the right one.
Okay, so we will, if this motion passes, this board will not be in agreement with advisory, will be in agreement with the petitioner. And we'll see which one town meeting likes. So I'll move, I'll move the subcommittee language. All those in favor, please say aye. Select person Franco?
Aye.
Select person Heller?
Aye.
Select person Green?
Aye.
Select person Hamilton?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Last but not least is Article 28. Oh, 18? Oh, I thought we...
We did.
We did.
We did not.
We voted not to read.
We decided not to.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's the disability.
It's 10:30.
I thought it's really 10:30.
So do we know what, we have a, we have a subcommittee report, do we know what the full advisory did with it? So I don't think we're ready.
What was the...
Remember there was, the subcommittee took out a bunch of the wheres, and the petitioner didn't...
Didn't like it.
Didn't like it, so I'm going to suggest that this be held for until next week, or two weeks from now. So, last item on the agenda is the town administrators appointment, employment agreement, and we had agreed to do this May 14th, so that the new member would have some input. So I'm gonna suggest we postpone it. So I think that concludes our...
10:30.
10:30?
Yes, I'm sorry, you're sorry.
Do you want this, Kate?